Calling this meeting to order on February ninth at seven thirty three AM. You.
Or don't even log in with sound at all.
Okay. Um, uh, why don't we start with the weather? That's what our agenda item is.
I don't think there's too many complaints about the weather. Not with seventy degree temperatures, all the way back even in Ohio and Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, all of those cities I do the weather for, and they hit seventy or better today. And, you know, we can expect more of this for the rest of the month going into March. Uh, because the I I stood up here in November and December, and I told everybody that it was gonna be a bad winter. The only thing about that was that it was a terrible winter in most of the rest of the country, but here, no snow. I said, get the the plows ready, you know, the contractor here to shovel the the snow on the streets. And we've only had like three tenths of an inch officially as far as that goes. Expect that maybe Sunday it's gonna be in the forties with some rain, north and west, maybe a mixed bag. But, uh, no accumulating snow here. I don't see any of that coming. Next week, we go right back into the sixties. We'll have more days for the rest of the month of March, going into month, the month of February going into March, where the temperatures during the day will be in the fifties and sixties. There'll be more of those days than temperatures in the forties and probably no days with temperatures in the thirties. So that's a good weather report, and you know, I blew the forecast, but you know, those are the kind I like.
You said a lot of snow. You said a wet winter.
Well, all I can say is you really jinxed it with that forecast for all the kids in the village to go. So they they know your name. They know where you live.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure.
You see me with the mask on.
Don't put away this, but. Right. Okay, thank you so much. Um, next we're gonna, we're gonna go to proving the previous meeting minutes. So if someone would like to, having reviewed them.
I have reviewed them and approved them.
Okay, we have a.
I, I.
You moved to approve them? Okay, Arthur moves. We have a second. Susan, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Host, Nolan, we have Jeff Blander joining us a little later. He was delayed. Okay. Great. Um, and, uh, as per usual, we'll start with resident comments. If there are folks that wanna raise their electronics, either their little their hands electronically or motion to us. Um, and I'll call on you. Okay. Seeing none. When I say none, usually the hands go up, and there we go, Marty and Susan. So Marty beat you, Susan, even though Susan, you gave me a nice smile here into the camera. Marty, please unmute.
Let Susan go first and I'll follow up because Susan was trying to wave earlier.
Okay, all right. Please, Susan.
Okay, uh, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. So I was gonna mention that I thought it would be really useful to have an a forum about the ethics ordinance proposal. It seems like a lot of people had thoughts about that, and I just thought it could provide a better airing of of ideas and thoughts if there were a dedicated opportunity to to talk about it. Um, I guess I'm I'm really kind of concerned that I feel like the council should be the first stop for concerns that residents have about other residents. I think it could really add to a little bit of acrimony among residents to have their fellow residents bringing cases of concern without it stopping by the council first. So, um, I'm also concerned about the order of the Ethics Committee kind of getting, turning into a kind of deputized group of residents like a Supreme Court that who's, you know, their their terms don't even overlap with elected terms. They keep going. And now the purview is gonna be widening even more. I'm just, I just feel like the councils, the the first, should be the first stop if there are concerns about that. So I think there should be a forum dedicated to that. The other question or thought was about the time for curing ballots. Um, I love the election plan. It's so, um, I think it's a really good plan, and I think that, um, in the end, meeting last time at the Election Committee, there was a kind of narrow interpretation of the amount of time that needed to be spent on curing ballots, and it as though it had to be on the very same day that you found out that there was a problem with, um, the ballot envelope with it, perhaps not having the signatures or something, and and if you tried to do it on that very same day, you almost have no time. And, um, uh, there were ten residents who wrote a petition to the council members about that with what I thought was excellent wording to provide more specificity, because it's certainly right to have a narrow interpretation of of only, you know, one can only cure ballots for a couple of hours, but it's also right to provide more specificity if the true intent of the council and and the election plan is to be able to have an opportunity for residents to, um, look at a, uh, you know, correct a little signature on a an outside of an envelope so that their vote is counted. And the last thing I'll just say is that when I did have correspondence with the outreach coordinator for the Board of Elections for Montgomery County, I asked about the time for curing ballots, and I said, um, how long will the, to cure the ballots, how long do you give, um, people to do that? And and the answer was, um, from, uh, from the Board of Elections was curing will continue until the last day of canvassing at and after which unsigned mail-in ballots are rejected. So then I had a follow-up question. So when you mentioned the, and this was my question, when you mentioned the last day of canvassing, how does that relate to the date of the election itself? And the answer, um, was canvassing may take days or weeks after election day. The amount of time needed is dependent on the number of domestic, international, military mail-in ballots, et cetera, and provisional ballots. There's statutory dates and deadlines, but those can be extended as needed. So basically, the the main point is that curing ballots from their perspective, um, lasts until the last day of canvassing, and that canvassing itself may take days or weeks after election day. So I think the proposal that was made in the petition was for three days. Um, I think it could be even more, but at least three days after, um, the counting of the ballots, I think should be allotted, you know, at least for for actually having an opportunity to go back to a resident and and see if they can address the the issue on the ballot. So, um, thank you, and I also hope the, um, survey results will be fully made available to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And and before we go to Marty, I think on the ethics, and we can talk about this. First of all, I'm not opposed to a forum. Um, we have till the March meeting if 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 folks, I don't know if we need to vote on it or how that pursuit, okay? Um, and I think it's concurrent, uh, with an ethics complaint coming to the committee that the concurrently, the 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 council gets alerted. Something to that effect is how I read it, but but, uh.
Well, what happens is there's just an initial assessment where we may just dismiss the complaint, but then the council gets the complaint.
Yeah. Um, and in terms of the curing, I I'm I do not recollect from last year what we did, but it seemed to be, um, uh, I I think a reasonable amount of time, as it says in in the plan, and I think we we it was well received, so I'm not sure why it's being narrowed now. I don't partake in these meetings, so.
It's it's not being narrowed. Uh, it was done the night of the counting.
Okay.
Uh, and I I don't know if I understood what canvassing means in this case, but it seems to me when you finish counting, uh, when you mentioned when all the various, uh,
Yeah.
envelopes come in from all over the world and so, well, that happens the night of the counting.
Yeah.
So that's when the canvassing would end, according to that definition, if I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah.
So that would be the end of canvassing, uh, for Martin's edition. Okay, okay.
And I'd just like to add something to since you asked me about it. Um, the committee has a confidential email box, and that's where all complaints will come into them. One of the big things that came off were residents were saying that, you know, this was gonna be a public hearing, a public process, people's reputations would be ruined, and part of the ordinance provides a confidentiality provision that goes far beyond what the other jurisdictions do. So that's how the complaints come in. They come into the confidential Ethics Committee email box.
All right. Well, we we can continue this conversation, but let's go to 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 Marty. Go ahead, Marty.
I think Susan had a follow-up.
Um, I I just wanted to clarify that when I look up the word canvassing, it says the canvas is the official tally of votes for any given election. The purpose of the canvas is to account for every ballot cast and ensure that every valid vote cast is included in the election totals. So the quote that I read from the email said that, um, canvassing may take days or weeks after election day. In no way could one interpret that to mean that it needed to happen on election day. Canvassing is not concurrent with the notion of counting ballots on election day. And it says canvassing may take days or weeks after election day. So that is how it is done in Montgomery County. It is not the same day, and the term canvassing just refers to the official vote tally, which can again include the curing of the ballots, and that's why it extends a little bit beyond. Now, we said a reasonable time, as you interpreted, Andrew, that would take, you know, you know, maybe a few days. But other people can interpret reasonable differently, and that's why the language was proposed by, um, this petition that we add just a few phrases there to clarify. If the intent is truly to count those unsigned ballots, you must give it time and reason, and and so that was simply why. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Marty?
Okay, thanks. I want to start out with some thank yous here. Um, first, I want to thank, um, Arthur and the staff and Andrew. I think you had to for the audit. Um, I joke about being one of the few residents that actually reads the audit, and I do, and I did, and I have. And I thank you for all the work that went into making that good. Eli, I'm looking forward to hearing the details on your report. So thanks for that. I also want to thank the staff and I guess Katie, too, uh, for the improvements in the newsletter. Uh, and Michael, I think that your alerts about the gas leak over in Brookville and you know, how to flush your water lines and all that stuff has been really helpful. I really encourage you to do more than that. And the the newsletter just had this whole friendly, informative tone to it, and that was really great. And thank you more of the same, please, and, um, there there's a lot of good stuff going on here. I I want to thank, um, um, Arthur for working on the, uh, survey. I know that's a fair amount of work, and Michael, I expect you and Aaron did a fair amount of it, too. And I'm wondering where the other half is. The the public comments normally are in the packet along with the actual numerical tallies. And so I'm asking to please, uh, include that or send, you know, put that online or somewhere where people can read it, because I think the public comments are sometimes the most interesting part of the survey results. And people often have good ideas and suggestions there, so please include that second half of the survey results. Um, on the ethics and the election, um, I have a number of questions about the ethics thing, and I don't know, Andrew, do you want me to hold those for later till we get to the ethics section, or or should I do that now?
Yeah, I mean, if if it's gonna be, uh, double the amount, let's do it once.
Get it over with.
Yeah, why don't you go for it right now?
Okay, okay. Um, I I agree with what Susan said about needing to have a public hearing on this. There are a variety of concerns, and I'm sure everyone in this room remembers how many residents, I mean dozens and dozens of residents voiced a whole variety of concerns when this was first proposed two years ago, two and a half years ago. And I think we really do need to hear what the residents think about it at this point before we expand it. Um, because it has an effect on the whole village. If it's affecting volunteerism, which I know a number of volunteers who say that they're not willing to to serve, um, because they're concerned about the current version, let alone an expanded version of the ethical bias ordinance. Anyway, I really think, you know, we need to go. We need to have a good public hearing, um, separate from a committee meeting and separate from tonight, because tonight's agenda is already jammed. So, Andrew, I was happy to see you say that that you thought that was, you know, something that you could go with. I hope the whole council will go with that, because I think it really is helpful. We'll be very productive here before there's any vote to actually expand the witness. On the, um, the proposal tonight about changing the conflict of interest forms, um, I had a question about, um, what is and is not included there, and Lori, maybe you can answer that right now. Almost all the questions, um, are about business conflicts. Um, you know, like if you own a share of waste management or something. But, um, I'm more concerned about conflicts, um, that could be personal. For example, Lori, if your best friend had a complaint against him or her, would you recuse yourself? I don't know how that would be handled. I mean, that's a whole series of things that we don't need to talk about tonight. But I I I do have, um, just a whole series of questions about that, and and it doesn't seem like the new conflict of interest form actually talks about, you know, um, like, you know, serving on the election committee if your spouse is running for for office, or if your best friend is running for office. You know, those kinds of conflicts aren't business conflicts, but they are certainly something that would raise questions in some people's minds, perhaps, about impartiality, so.
Marty, it's my understanding that we're not changing the language. It's just removing the requirement of a a notary to notarize the conflicts.
Okay, Andrew, do you want me to respond to that? Because there are two things. One was there, um, last year when we started the review process, it was the first year we ever reviewed the forms. We, um, noticed that there were a lot of omissions on the form. Katie, you probably remember this, because we met a couple of times. And what we did was we looked at the form and said, okay, well, let's not make any substantive changes. Let's just put numbers on here, and let's change the last question that had, um, some redundancies, and a lot of people had missed. And, um, we presented it to the council last year towards the end of our term, and at the time, Jeff said, um, well, Ron needs to take a look at this. And Ron made, in fact, this is in my notes for tonight that I was gonna talk about. Ron made a a very minor change to question number eight, which specifies the duty to update the form and submit to the Ethics Committee rather than the Council Chair, um, as the committee had originally proposed. But otherwise, the form is exactly the same, but in a different layout so that it's easier for people to fill out. We didn't make substantive changes to the original form. So it wasn't like we.
Well, there was one, there was the, uh, not in the present, it was done in the past, added, uh, the, uh, the behavior of impartiality uh, to the conflict of interest. So impartiality has been added. But that's not new. That was done two years ago.
But not on the, right, but not on the form.
Not.
Yeah. You should copy. There's a form in the pocket tonight, and basically that's substantively the same as the old form with numbers, because people skipped questions, and then Niles was calling people saying, if you go down to paragraph four or so we just numbered the questions, moved the yes or no. Um, we didn't rewrite the form except for the question eight, which had a redundancy, which we rewrote, left question, and then Ron made a minor change because he got it appropriate that any updates, um, and disclosures come directly to the committee, not the council chair.
Okay.
Lori, thank you for that clarification, and Andrew, if you'll bear with me, I have another two questions here. Um, I do I do think the COI form probably should be discussed at the forum as well, um, because of that issue of it's not clear that that personal conflicts would be included. Um, although I appreciate that that's not a new problem. It certainly came to my attention when I read it this time, and people may want to discuss that along with the.
Marty, Marty, this impartiality is one of the requirements. I think that takes care of what you're, what you're having an issue with.
Maybe. I hope so. But anyway, I think it should be on the on the discussion at the forum. Let me jump, uh, back if I could to, um, um, a question that came up to me. Um, people asked me, um, over the last week, um, how many complaints have there been to the Ethics Committee? And I said that I didn't know, because Lori, at some meetings, I thought I heard you say there was one complaint that you handled. And in another couple of meetings, you said there have been no complaints, and so could you?
Yeah, I never said there was a single complaint. In fact, I've been, Katie's shaking her head. I've I've been very clear saying that we've received no complaints.
No.
So.
That's not in history. That's in what what period of time?
Well, Marty was talking to saying that she thought that I had said that we had received one complaint. Right, so I'm talking about since the passage of the, um, expanded ordinance, the committee has received no complaints.
Let's see, well, the two people who asked me about it thought there had been a complaint, and thought you had said it, obviously, maybe. You didn't say it, somebody else must have.
No.
Wasn't it? It's been a complaint about, about, um, um, a council member or council members plural campaigning for candidates back in twenty twenty-one. Is that before this was adopted? Is that why you're saying there were no? Because wasn't there a complaint like that? I mean, I didn't file it. I don't know.
Very specific, um, procedure for filing complaints. There were some residents that came to one of the meetings and tried to publicly weigh some complaints about, um, council members campaigning. And, um, the Ethics Committee requested that if they had a complaint, they follow the procedure. If the procedure's not followed, it's not a complaint. Um, and the Ethics Committee actually took that issue up the following year, and Ron weighed in on it. And, um, it's actually a constituent service for, um, council members to weigh in on elections, and they are free to endorse everyone. And the council and the committee, Ron gave us that advice, and the committee voted unanimously to uphold that advice.
Are there any public records on this? I mean, if the, I want to go back to the two people.
They can go back to our meeting minutes, and those are covered in our meeting minutes. I don't know off the top of my head which months they were.
Who was the one meeting last year?
Right.
I remember.
Right, I it was that it was the beginning of last year, but there was also, um, I think it was May of the year that, um, the ordinance passed.
And just to be clear, I was not part of that, nor did I ask residents to, uh, to, uh, present to the council, uh, such complaints. Um, anything else, Marty?
Um, I think that's it for now. On the election, I would recommend that the the, um, flexibility that Naomi sent in, the note she sent in from the ten residents, I think that's a reasonable thing. I hope the council will vote to approve that language, uh, tonight. It should be a simple vote. I don't think it requires anything beyond that. It's just a clarification on giving the the Election Committee a little more time and flexibility to do what the ordinance requires them to do. So thank you for for taking care of that detail tonight.
Thank you, Marty. I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can vote on this, because it's not been, it's not been, uh, uh, introduced or presented, um, publicly here. I think we need thirty days for such a thing, but but let me just.
Be able to see it.
And we'd have to, yeah. One other thing, um, just to clarify on the audit, that was all Susan, um, who should get, well, Arthur always, but Susan, I remember at the get-go, um, when we were still without, uh, Village Manager extraordinaire, Michael Solomon, um, was taking the lead, so I want to publicly thank Susan again and Arthur. And, well, I mean, I don't know how much praise he needs tonight, but I think that's that's plenty. Um, okay, we're gonna go to Peter, and then we we're moving on. Peter, if you're not unmuted, yeah, there you go.
Okay, sorry. Um, I just wanted to add my voice, uh, in favor of, um, a hearing on the, um, ethics ordinance. Uh, the the law has been in effect now for, uh, quite some time, and there has been no real attempt to, uh, gauge how well it has operated. And, um, I, you know, I think that there ought to be some attempt before we expand the reach of the ethics ordinance to take a look at at how it is actually operated and attempt to assess, you know, what are its problems? What are its successes? Uh, what's what's working and what's not? The second thing that I think has not been adequately assessed is the effect of the ordinance on the village. And I guess I'm thinking especially of the issue of volunteerism. There have been some assertions that, uh, there has been no decline in volunteerism uh, as a result of this. In fact, it has risen. But, um, I have no knowledge of any data that, uh, is available on this, and I don't know how, uh, one would know what the effect has been at the moment. And, um, it's clear that there are at least several people in in my personal knowledge who have chosen to not participate in village affairs because of the ethics law. And I think that's a very significant impact of it, and the whole impact of it uh, ought to be assessed carefully before we go further and expand it, and I think we ought to consider possible, a wider array of possible changes rather than simply expanding it for no really clear reason other than, you know, consistency to include the third committee. But, uh, the the reason for not including it at the time that it was originally passed seemed clear and persuasive that these were, that ethical issues arose. Uh, but it's not so clear in the case of the Community Engagement Committee that those are a significant issue. So, um, I just think that that there are plenty of issues to to look at here, and the, uh, the council should, uh, have the opportunity to to look at this more carefully and to, um, allow public input on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, I don't know if it's if it's this time of year or what it is, but we're honored to have, uh, uh, Captains Mike and Nick here in, uh, in the Village Office. Um, I don't know if we want to call this, uh, a annual or biannual. I don't know. The last time I've seen you guys here, I I I see Mike in his cruiser, um, at, uh, at at Taylor quite a bit and stop by and startle him when I do.
Definitely do.
Um, but great to have you guys here, and and, uh, we'd love to hear from you about how things are going in in the neighborhood and the, you know, this general area here around VMA.
Um, cool, I guess I'll start, and then Mike, you can you wrap up everything and fix everything that I messed up on. So, um, thank you for having us here. Um, to be back after like COVID, COVID time, we were on a couple of virtuals, but could be back here in person. So, in crime-wise, what I can say is that the village is seeing basically same crime trends, the county is seeing at a lesser extent, right? Um, in a short term, we look at the numbers, um, for the last month, really nothing really stands out as far as, you know, the biggest things have been for twenty thirteen, because we came here, which is almost now ten years, this May, I believe. Um, biggest thing you're going to be theft from autos, you know, crime-wise, at least theft from autos, always number one, some burglary being number two, and thankfully, that's it. I mean, certainly we've had a couple of instances of violent crime in the village over the last ten years. Um, thankfully, those are are very, very, very punitive, particularly. Um, you know, theft from autos mean a problem here, but for better or worse, that's not just the village problem. The problem that's happening all across the county. Other places having probably even more so than you guys have in the village. Some of the driving factors behind that are, you know, especially in this part of the county, like I've said a few times now, caught you. House sizes unlocked drive cars into the street where they're parked, meaning that somebody could very easily walk up and down a side street every trying door handles and just wait till the door handle's openable. Open them, unlock, go inside, take whatever and go. There have been nationally some crime trends. I think they have touched on it a little bit. The biggest one, I think, being the newer Kias and Hyundai's, and that's been a pretty publicly known thing, how easy they are to steal. Um, I think there have been a couple vehicle thefts in the village that are based on that premise to the point where people who are actively gonna look for those vehicles because they're so easy to steal. Um, that's an issue we've seen pretty much county-wide, um, for like the newer model.
And insurance companies are a few.
Yeah, now they're saying we're not gonna cover you, because it is.
He is maybe, too.
Right, like, I mean, I could teach, I could teach metro algea to steal a key in about twenty seconds. So, um.
This is one way to get rid of Arthur and the council. Going zipping down the road.
Um, that's finished. We've kind of seen, you know, you know, nationally. The other big thing that's happened here over the last, if I'd say about a year or so, one of my job in the department is Director of Special Investigations. I oversee our intelligence facets to include working with other federal agencies. So the protest at the Supreme Court Justice's House has been in my wheelhouse both here, but also my my full-time side. And I know that's caused a good amount of consternation in the village. Um, you know, all politics aside, having at some time, you know, seventies people assembling at the market to march over there for a long period of time, almost every Wednesday throughout the summer. I'm sure that was, you know, problematic for a lot of of residents, all politics aside. Um, that has seemed to kind of die down. But one thing we've seen in my full-time job is protesting a crime residences is no longer something that people look at it being a a taboo thing. It's gonna continue. Um, it's there's no sign of changing, and, um, so as different developments happen on a national, local basis, I think you're continuing to see this sort of protest happening based on, you know, who some of your your neighbors are. Um, and as time goes on, like Montgomery County is a hub for high-profile people. There there are other, there are other high-profile people who live in this village that may become in the public way at some point in the future. That could always be a concern that we kind of give back, right? Um, anything for my rant? Mike, what do you have to say?
So I'm gonna do this and say, I'm gonna congratulate all of you and also compliment all of you. As Nick said, when we look at crime stats, especially theft from autos and some of the other lesser property crimes, there is almost physically a little bubble around the village, and I'm not being facetious when I say that. You could pull up a chart and see, and you can go to our, uh, data Montgomery website yourself and pull it up, and it is there, and that's not because Nick and I are here. It's because you all are locking your doors, but more importantly, It's because you all are locking your doors, but more importantly, you aren't leaving stuff in your course that somebody walking by can see it and want it. And, and that's really a testament to the amount of time and effort you put in. Um, so other than Susan and I, we were outside just talking, and it really is just something as easy as just clicking your button. Uh, and that's it. So, uh, one final thing, Michael has done a great job in his first few months here. If you guys have something that is a concern to you, public safety wise, or something that Nick and I can uh, do for you, please just call the, the, the town officer, send an email. Michael's already reached out to us a few times since he's been here and said, hey, this has come up. Is it something you could take care of or look into? Um, so that is always an avenue for all of you. It has been quite some, I think the last time I was on was when we were doing the speed bumps over on Thornapple. Um, so we don't always get here to talk with you and to take your questions, but please continue to hit up the village office if you uh, all need anything.
Um, can I ask you a couple of questions on behalf of um, some residents who reached out to the ordinance tonight? Um, and I would love to think we live in a bubble, but my, you remember me, my. My bubble was first, but. A couple of questions. So, uh, some residents wondered, we have, there's kind of been questioning, not, not to purpose in life, we, we really appreciate you. Um, but uh, do you carry weapons when you patrol uh, the neighborhood? And to what extent, like if you are seeing, say, some funny business, someone kind of say a perch that Taylor and Book though, and someone's trying to get into the supermarket, what, like, what can you do in these instances? Um, also, a couple of trends that I've seen on neighborhood listservs. Um, I just was on a meeting the other night with the DCC high school cluster. Um, my daughters went to DCC in Silver Creek. Um, and there was Chevy Chase and Los Mary Hills parents on that with MCPF and MCDU. Four accounts now of kids reporting suspicious um, vehicle trailing them while they're walking them from school.
Inviting them.
Yeah, calling them, asking them to get into the vehicle. Um, I'm not exactly sure of your hours, and I don't want you to publicize that because that's kind of the point of having patrol. But like, if you see something like in the, it happened, can you, what do you do? Would you just call for backup or?
So, I'm gonna walk through.
Yeah.
If I skip the second part, let me answer the short part of your question first. I'll go with long, but how like? About the car that was following, and I, I would say anybody who sees something suspicious. You know, back after nine eleven, you had to see something, say something, right? Where if you see a suspicious package or um, somebody who's got taken pictures of a bridge or something outside of the ordinary, call police, right? And one of the things that, you know, that, you know, I always, my, my main job is overseeing eighty-two, eighty-two detectives in the department. And we, we follow up on some of these suspicious reporting from a counter terror point of view. But we have a whole unit of detectives, about sixty of them, who just handle family crime type stuff, like child abuse and child head-on feelings, stuff like that. If you have somebody who's being filed that's suspicious like that, take a tag number down, call nine-one-one, like, you know. My nine-year-old nephew has, and I watch now on cellular, my twelve-year-old nephew's got a cell phone. Pretty soon, my five-year-old niece is gonna have a phone too. You're kidding, I'm sure, but like, everyone has phones now. I didn't get my server cell phone until twenty seven. But kidnapped have cell phones or they have a way to get a little parent. Call nine-one-one, take a, take a, take a, a note of the, of license plate, what the car looks like. That's huge for us. That allows you, first, that is the report. If you don't know what's happening, the chances of us seeing something either in the village or just in our normal jobs is much more small. We have to rely on community for eyes, will, points out that stuff. It could be something completely benign. That kind of thing happens sometimes, where you're like, um, I thought this person was following me. They're like, no, I'm a, I'm a UPS driver, right? Deliver a package if I'm going, and they could have a list of packages and all is legit. But what I've learned in my career is coincidences don't often happen. So if you see something suspicious like that, report it to the police and we can resell it. Yeah, it's kind of easy question. Reference will be kind of see. Um, if we were to see, right, Mike and I are, are both armed right now. We're always armed in the village. I have never put myself in a police position without being armed. Um, because I have a duty to intervene if I see criminal behavior happening. Doesn't always mean that deadly force is governed by our G support policy. If we see somebody committing a burglary, that's not authorization in and of itself to use deadly force to shoot someone, right? But you have to be prepared at any time when taking police action, that you could be in a position to have to defend yourself or somebody else with deadly force. And that's part of the, like, the, the sober realization of our job, right? Um, so every time we work here in the village, we're gonna be armed. Um, we may not always be in uniform. There's a lot more time where I'm not, partly unintentional, because I want to be able to blend in and see those kind of weird things that are going on. Mike spent a couple of years when I was in one of her surveillance games. How many times has somebody pulled into your car door while you're on the surveillance? Why did I get, right? He's sitting in it. He's sitting in it and engine's off and he's under a blanket, try, trying to look like he's blending in. And if you're, if you're, if you're doing a surveillance, waiting for a robbery target, you're not even gonna do anything about that, the attempt, right? Because you're both in something else. But I think I'm trying to blend in to kind of see things that kind of happen. If, if we see a crime occur, we're gonna take action. It's gonna be either trying to make an apprehension um, of the person. We'll call for backup, but um, we're gonna try to take police action when it's safe to do so. It may be something where we wait and watch somebody, like if I see somebody being suspicious walking down the street, I may try to follow him from a distance and watch him a couple of times, get back in position. Because look, I'm not, I started working here, I was like, you know, thirty-two years old, a lot faster than. I'm not casting anybody in a foot chase, like they used to get it. So, it's gonna be, I'm gonna use my brain more and get people in a position to be able to do it. So, um, Mike, any other?
No, but just, we have full police powers. So just anything we could do when we're working for the county, we can do here as well. And that's the great part about Maryland is that we are commissioned by the state, and therefore when we're working secondary employment for you all, we aren't just a security guard. We are a, a police officer that has both police.
But I, I, from what I've seen you uh, at work, you're not like Bosch who pulls out a weapon the first time they see somebody and go.
Absolutely not. That's not what.
That's, that's what I think is a concern, right? Bosch is not doing good police work now.
It's a great show, but.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, no, Lori, do you have a question? Do you have a ticket people for parking violations in our village? Of on Cummings and um, I'm aware of at least three pretty serious accidents at the corner of Brookville and Cummings, which is concerning because there is also um, a crossing there for the children walking to Chevy Chase Elementary. Two cars have plowed through um, that neighbor's um, fence. And it seems like that's a regular spot there at the intersection, the um, deposit landscaping shop or trailer, which makes it a very blind crosswalk for those children. And I'm just wondering if you ever give parking tickets? Because I've been told we don't, we, we don't enforce parking in the village.
So, there's such a difference. You have to see a county, you have a city, town code.
Right?
Village code for parking.
Right.
That also mirrors, and I actually remember a couple of.
Well, we gotta make it consistent.
They made it consistent, everything mapped. So then at one point, it was like, the village code was ten feet from a crosswalk and the county was fifteen or the inverse. So, both mirror each other.
Right.
We can write citations under the county parking law. The village law, there is really no mechanism to, you can have the law, but there's really no, no punitive mechanism. So we write the citations of the county. We have written parking citations. This is the only place I have written parking citations in the last ten years because I don't do my normal job. I park what I normally am doing.
Okay.
Um, but what we most often are dealing with, the parking wise, is like abandoned vehicles. Um, we have that a lot. It comes to a call and saying, hey, this is car parked from my house. It's been there for a week or two. Mike and I have a whole process we go through and communicate offline to say, all right, I marked the car. It hasn't moved. We had to be able to verify, like, it could be that the car is leaving at like two o'clock in the morning, you just don't notice.
Right.
Verify the car hasn't moved and we, then we window sticker it and then we write a citation.
Excellent.
So we do write parking citations. Um, if you see something acute like that, where it's like, hey, this car is parked at the danger, just call an emergency. I mean, they'll just patch it off for that. If we are working, we'll just take, we'll just take it.
Okay.
But um, I want to say we're here seventy percent of the time. Chances are, we're not gonna be here when that happens.
Okay.
So then they'll send it also down here to write a parking citation.
And if it is something that is problematic in the neighborhood and is continuous, not necessarily like that, if it's, you know that, and I'm gonna make up, that Michael always parks illegally by far. Just send a quick email to the office and that way Nick and I know that what we're doing around to check that specifically all the time. So, and we, we, we get those a lot, but yeah, to answer your question, we one hundred percent do. We also go and.
Yeah, we go, we go do that. That's actually when, when uh, when Niles was here, I actually remember a couple of times, we had like a, a chronic parking issue where it was like, you know, and look, last thing I want to do is just tow a village residence car, right? Like,
Right.
Bill pays us, pays us to be here. If we can work something out where it's like, hey, look, can't park your car here, work on, put it in your garage. We've done that a half a dozen times. Well, we've been, we've been moving cars. It's like, we run the tag, come back to a different address, like Silver Spring or, and, you know, and it's legitimately abandoned. Then we normally find is that once you put the sticker on the window, it's a big orange sticker that says, like, you know, notice.
Right.
Something for towing. I made sure I put that on the window in a place where the people inside the houses can see it. It's almost gone in hours. Once they kind of know like, okay, this is happening, then they're using it.
Do you guys care about out-of-state um, tags that are, that are expired? Is that something that you guys?
Um, there's a parking violation for that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, look, if it's, if it's your neighbor who's got like his buddy visiting from out of town, they're there overnight.
Yeah.
Probably not gonna raise a thing over it, where we'll see that happen is like an abandoned vehicle. Um, a couple of times we've had, worked on a college student, like, you know, for a recent college graduate, like housing to their parents who are gone for a month or a half at the time. Yeah, we, it's tricky too, because a lot of like Pennsylvania, they don't give those out anymore. So I could have a car registered in Pennsylvania that's showing twenty twenty-one, and it's completely valid because they, they, they got away from that, especially now that we're seeing this trend of police departments and everything not making the traffic stops for those minor violations.
Yeah.
A lot of state agencies got away. So out-of-state is a little bit trickier, but it could just be, get the information over us and Nick and I will do what we do. And if it's not valid, then we did, we could take action if it is.
Two comments, and I know they're, they're questions, just two comments. One is, I, I've been hearing from folks um, just wondering whether you mix up your, your spots. I only see you that one spot because that's the time of day or evening or whatever it is, but I'm not looking for you either. So that's fine. That's one question. Then others have asked, um, would it be more effective, and I think it could go both ways, to be in a marked versus not marked? Vehicle. For the turn sake, mark probably more, but for actually witnessing crime without folks feeling watched.
Right.
Probably not, so.
So, you know, I'll say about that. In terms of, we, we move up, they, I mean, you know, we kind of have different patterns, how we work is, we have our full-time job and that kind of lends us to, you know, Mike, Mike usually being here certain page and times and me being here certain days and times. But we've worked all sorts of, you know, flux time, like different times where it's like, I'm down here for some reason at six o'clock in the morning. I'm gonna work a few hours, I'm down here, right? Usually a coffee handed that early. Um, so what we do, I, I think if you looked at the pattern of across the year, we've probably worked every, at some point, every minute of every day. At least over the last ten years. Um, in terms of cars we have, you know, we get the car richie to us, you know, like we don't pick the cars we have. Um, my, you know, maybe it's because I'm a cop for so long. I look at Mike's car and I'm like, that's a police car. Like it stands out, like it's sort of on to me. Um, you know, mine, because of my assignment, I'm a little bit more covert, like I supervise undercover officers. My location is a non-police facility. So you can't even go to my office in Mike's car. It has to be, you know, so that's because of the operating security of the facility I work in. So, you know, we're kind of bound to the car rush, right? So like, um, but it's a good blend, right? Because Mike's visible in uniform. I'm usually the one looking thing, but there's times I come in uniform, there's times Mike doesn't. So we have a good blend. Um, you know, and what I'll say about that is, I think it came up the, the past two times. I actually had a resident or might have been just, forgive me, I forget the neighborhood. It's on the other side of Columbus, not, not VMA's, but they actually came up to, because you will see me in, in my black car there.
Pretty dress of a car.
I'll put it at once, which is just in that car. It's just the blue lights in the back. And so I was just slowly creeping around the neighborhood and somebody flagged me down, goes, what's going on? So I had the chance to explain to them, hey, listen, I want you to know that I'm out here and about. And that's just one of the ways where I know some people probably watching me on the ring camera, really, what is that? Why is that car going down? So, so that's what I try to do, because you're right. It would be fantastic if we both had marked cars so we could just have our overheads on and things, but we, we've been making, we've been making do with what we're assigned, like Nick said. Um, I like to, and as you said, I like to be visible and when I, when I can, that's where it is, because anybody that comes into this neighborhood is gonna go through the stop sign ninety percent of the time. And so that's why I like to post up. It also keeps people from stopping there. People think I'm there doing seatbelt violations in that stop sign, which is, you know, a twofer. Um, when in all actuality, I'm there to be that high visibility presence and people know that that's a cop car. So it is a good mix. I won't say where we do. When you see that car, it's black. I could park at dead ends and then pull into neighborhoods and things. I've actually had some residents come up and do the, hey, you know, are, are you Mike? Yeah, you know what I mean? Like that. You know that's me, but I've had people come up and challenge, which is good and bad. It's me, but, so people are alert in the, in the village here, which is great.
Yeah.
So. Real, real quick, funny stories. Mike reminded me, I probably shouldn't say this, but well, anyway. I was sitting, so like, obviously you have a lot more federal type vehicle around. My car kind of matched with the better job. And I was backing, I was backed in by the other side from my sits. Kind of watch what's going on. And a car pulled next to me, guy gets out and knocks the window. What's up? He's like, hey, we're moving, we're moving sixty-four with a V-five. I'm like, okay, it's a car, cool. Gets in a car and leaves. And I'm just like, all right. So he probably thinks the guy he talked to was a complete jerk from whatever service he worked for.
Yes.
The other guy, the guy who's supposed to, he's probably still waiting for the guy to tell him.
No, uh, all great. And first of all, thank you so much. I know we're so grateful to have you and it's wonderful to, you know, have you back. Um, a couple of thoughts. It's really more of an observation and then just more of a, a statement is, um, so obviously traffic, we've talked about so important just to have you here regularly, especially with the kids, such a popular place with the, 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 the mom and dad bus stops and, you know, and, and us there and seeing all the kids in the traffic. The commercial strip, as you know, I mean, we've had some incidents there that were, that were very um, concerning, of course. And, and so, you know, having that sense that you're here. The other piece is the purple line and, you know, what that may bring in terms of easier access to whatever mischief or, or worse. And so I just bring up that point where you mentioned sort of that safety bubble, but in some ways almost like a false or at least to be cautious, because I've looked at those sites too, right? And we get like an A or A plus. But really in striking distance, you've got Ds or worse. And so I think that's something which, you know, residents who may be listening or, or just, you know, as a, as a dad and, you know, with, with a young daughter, is just the idea that you really shouldn't be lulled be- because of these circumstances and how important it is that, you know, we have you. But again, when you get that moniker or the label of an A or an A plus, the difficulty of going to the county or the difficulty of getting extra support if something happens because they'll look at the statistics and say, uh, you folks are, you're not a concern of ours.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I remember sending you videos, Nick, um, from my, my Nest camera when, when we had a phase, really. I mean, it was, seemed like months and months of kids coming checking door handles and just saying that five steps away from the actual front door.
Right.
Where this could turn and, and of course Katie experienced someone breaking in and taking car keys. Um, and so I like that idea, what Jeff just said, don't get like, I know you're not gonna ever get lulled into complacency, but, but again, it's, it's spitting distance, you know, to, to other places.
Yeah, I mean, just on Monday morning, I saw on the Chevy Chase chatter site, Nevada, 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 my, my, like, but to um, uh, home there, uh, Sunday night and the Monday morning, they go out to their driveway and they realized that they picked up the signal from the key in the mudroom. Um, got the key, stopped, but then still just one of their family cars, but both cars, so both cars gone Monday morning, that's your Monday morning. And because the other car put the other bomb in the glove compartment, so never did it. That's true. And now I'm seeing, you know, uh, suggestions for security boxes that you lock up everything at night. You wanna know the vibes about that? But I mean, that's, that's where I run to, you know? I see you when I run at night and I'm, I'm always happy to see you. Though, I mean, that's just a hot skip and a dunk, it's down there. So it's, it is all around, isn't it? Yeah, yeah.
And you read a great point. One of, I remember, you know, Steph looks, for the ten years, Steph Ramato had been the bulk of it, right? I remember four or five years ago, maybe a couple of times actually over the last decade. Some of the greatest hits, like going over the biggest thing you've had in the last decade, um, like those stuff shows. But I remember a couple of times being asked, you know, I've heard about online, you know, technology that lets you clone T-bomb and any high, and I'm like, it's kind of like, these are very unsophisticated crimes. It's very brute force. You know, stolen, usually a stolen vehicle. Lately, usually a Hyundai or Kia going down the road, letting out a bunch of kids, you know, kid, eighteen, twenty-year-olds who, who aren't from the area, trying a bunch of car handles as the car follows them. Everyone gets in the, very unsophisticated head theft. Technology is getting better, where that sort of thing could become, like you mentioned, like using the RFID switch to get in, like, you know. Um, there are all sorts of like higher, tech is getting cheaper and it's both from a a consumer, the gossip of tech, but also for the criminal element, tech is getting cheaper. So, not to scare anybody, like you talk about being bold with sense of security. You can be happy about what things look like right now, but also be concerned about what tomorrow could bring. You know, purple line could bring a different criminal element. You're basically creating a east-west corridor that, um, you know, look, there's, it's very well known that public transit brings a lot of good things and bring bad. It's like, it's, 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 it's no one thing uses each other. So definitely something I think is definitely worth keeping the long-term eye on, how that's gonna change the character of the village. Um, in, you know, maybe not twenty twenty-two. Um, in, you know, maybe not twenty twenty two, we're going to twenty twenty three, but twenty twenty six and twenty twenty nine in the next decade, so. Interesting points all, you know.
And I'm sorry, very quick, I just want to give a shout out, and I think everyone recognizes Monty Boland, who is one of our neighbors, um. You know, the park is also a very unique aspect where there, you know, I mean, these are I think minors, you know, infractions of of we're we're all a bit older, but it's kids, you know, hanging out at night, but you know, there is potential there. So I I think that's just another piece of this complex system.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go to Marty and then we're gonna move on. Marty, um, do you have a question?
I do, thank you, and hi to Mike and Nick, thank you for all your good work. I'm concerned about stop sign enforcement, um, because people are still blowing through the stop signs. The speed bumps on Thornapple have helped absolutely control the speed, it's it's better, no question. But, uh, I'm not just talking rolling through the stop signs, I mean, now they're going through the stop signs at twenty miles an hour instead of forty, and that's a good improvement, thank you, but I appreciate the speed bumps, but they're still rolling through stop signs. I see it on Thornapple and Summit. And I'm wondering, um, I I I know that that there's a move in statewide, to the county, why to try to move away from traffic enforcement by adding ordination. Has there been any progress at all on like camera enforcement of stop signs? Or, uh, you know, wha- what's the options there? I don't want you got to sit on a stop sign at Chestnut or Delfield at Thornapple all day, I think it would be more effective down by the park or over by the shops, but uh, what can we do about stop sign enforcement? Because it's still a problem.
Um, great question, you know, automated traffic enforcement is really, whatever kind was one of the first places to bring speed cameras for or red light cameras. Love them or hate them, they exist, speed camera tickets for speed cameras, love them or hate them, they exist. Um, automated enforcement is gonna get bigger in the county, um, without question. Um, I think, you know, I've recently heard there is actually legislation in apples right now to allow um, noise on the enforcement, like it's like overly loud muffler and things like that. Um, that's, I would say, almost guaranteed to be passed, where to be authorized local level. Um, you're gonna definitely almost have, almost certainly, there's talk about distracted drive enforcement, automated enforcement, where cameras can see if you're using a device when you're driving. Um, that already exists in Europe, they want to bring here, and then like you mentioned, uh, Marty, yeah, red stop sign cameras. I think almost certainly will be the next wave beyond the red light. What makes it a little tricky is the tech, because a lot of times your red light, your red lights are in busier intersections with power already brought there, your stop signs are gonna be in neighborhoods that aren't gonna have all the infrastructure already built in, so I think it's gonna take a while, but for tech wise, you have stop signs, stop sign cameras in places like the village where you just have a, your residential neighborhoods. But I definitely think it's coming, I definitely can see the next, my guess would be the next thing you see is gonna be like our mobile speed camera trailers. Where you may not have a camera positioned someplace twenty-four seven, but you may have one sitting there for a couple hours, a couple days.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we'll keep kind of looking for that sort of thing, if that starts to develop, look, we're not gonna be able to, we're not gonna be the ones deploying that stuff. But we'll put, make sure the village, um, council knows that that technology exists, so they can start advocating on behalf of the village to get that stuff here.
Taking on on rolling through, uh, stop sign, how much?
It used to be ninety, it's up to one twenty, I think now. Then over on the other side of the ground, where the town churches, they have the light up by the elementary. When you pull up, the big light comes on.
They also often have, uh, uh, a county operator there that's assigned to the school. Okay, well, I want to say thank you. We have the most overqualified beat patrol. I would say in the entire country. So, yeah, you, you guys are good. No, we really appreciate.
And grab the mic, Mike actually promoted captain like a month ago.
Okay, we're gonna go on to, uh, reviewing the audit, so I don't know, um, but she's there. Yeah, Eva has remained patient. You're, uh, um, you're unmuted, so go for it, thank you.
The one thing I'll say is in the packet, um, before you jump in, Eva, is, um, it's in the very back of the packet, we have, um, the audit documents.
I just want to confirm, it's okay if I share my screen, Michael, walk through the statements with everybody.
Yeah, are you able to, or should I make you a co-host?
Um, let me see, oh, yeah, if you can, it's it is disabled.
How about now?
Perfect. All right, you guys can see my screen?
That's it, yeah, there's the cover.
Perfect. So before I get started, I saw the PDF that we sent you had, one of the links was broken. Um, when I show you, you're gonna laugh. I I have no idea how it went out. It says July, uh, June thirty, twenty twenty two and eighteen ninety nine. That is not correct, so we will get you a new updated PDF, it's not eighteen ninety nine. Um, so I am here tonight, talking to you guys about the fiscal year twenty-two audit for the Village of Martins additions. So I am gonna stop here on the auditor's report for just a second. Um, it did change in the current year. And so you'll see the opinion used to be at the very end of the report. And I guess, uh, Gatsby didn't really think people were reading it, so they're putting it right up top here at the beginning now. So in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. And so as you guys know, what that means is you have a clean audit opinion for fiscal year twenty-two. Um, just as a reminder, management is responsible for the financial statements. And I'll pause there for a second, and thanks Susan and Arthur for for really getting us through the audit this year. They stepped right in and got us everything we needed, um, and that was fabulous.
And you're great to work with, Eva.
Oh, thank you. Um, you guys were great to work with. Um, the next section is the auditor's responsibility. So these are not new things, these are things that we have always been doing. Um, it's just that now they want us to document it in writing in the report so that users of the financial statements sort of understand it. So just bear with me one second while I go through these couple of bullet points. Um, so we exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism. That is why you hire an independent auditor, right, to give you that outside perspective on your financial statements. We also identify and assess risks of material misstatements. We obtain an understanding of internal controls relevant to the audit. Um, that's not necessarily mean we will test it, but we do have to obtain an understanding. We evaluate accounting policies and the reasonableness of accounting estimates. And lastly, we also, it makes me laugh and chuckle because you guys have such a nice reserve, but we do have to analyze to make sure that you will be around in twelve months, it's called going concern. You guys have no going concern issues. Um, it just talks about we're required to communicate with covenants with you guys. So you'll see here, um, we did submit this report to the state on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, so you guys were in compliance with all state requirements. I'm gonna scroll quickly through the M D N A, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis. Really, that's just another summary that Gatsby requires, and we're gonna jump right into the statements. So as you guys remember, the statement of net position is similar to a balance sheet if you're in a for-profit world. Um, the language is a little bit different for municipal governments, but you have your total assets here at the top. You guys, um, have cash and cash equivalents, about two hundred and eighty-one thousand, and then a little over four million in your investment accounts. You also have capital assets of about nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand. New this year, and we'll talk about it a little more detail here in a minute, were your leased assets. Um, you have about, I think it's a little over eighty-six thousand when you add the current portion and the long-term portion. So your total assets, five million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand. You also, of course, like any organization, entity, company have current, um, liabilities. Your current liabilities at June thirty were about a hundred and four thousand, and they're normal payables, deposits. Um, win liability. Your long-term liability is about two hundred and forty-seven thousand. So your total liabilities at the end of last year, a little over three hundred and forty-one, uh, I'm sorry, fifty-one thousand. You also have some deferred inflows, which is new for your organization. I mean, everybody is aware of the ARPA money, right? All of the funds that you received from the federal government. Your, um, technically, if you do not spend those funds, they have to be returned to the government. And so in hurry to spend them, they are going to sit in this deferred account, and so at the end of June twenty twenty-two, you had unspent, uh, funds of about four hundred and seventy-one thousand. The difference between your assets, your liabilities, is what's known as net position. The town has a very healthy four-point-five million dollar net position of which, of almost three-point-six million is unrestricted, meaning it can be spent for any purpose. Exhibit A two. This is your statement of program activities. Essentially, this is your income statement, it's just gonna tell us where our expenses went and where our income came from. So this presentation's a little different than what most people are used to, it starts with the expenses. And it shows you how those expenses were funded. So here in this first column, we have all of our governmental activities, these are the things you think, when you think of what the village offers, right? General government services, building and zoning, public works, public safety, our our wonderful police officers. Um, recreation, then we have the ARPA funding broken out separately and some interest. So total expenses last year, seven hundred and, uh, almost seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. And so we know we do have some charges for services of about twenty-four thousand, and we have operating grants and contributions of a little over fifty-two thousand. So that gives us a deficit of six hundred and seventy-six thousand, and that deficit is filled by the property and income taxes. So your property taxes, um, just forty-two thousand, but our income taxes were over a million, one million eighty-three thousand last year. We do have some intergovernmental revenue of about fifty-six thousand and a little bit of interest in miscellaneous. So your total general revenues last year, a little under one point two million. So we take our total expenses, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand from that one point two million, and we had a positive change in net position of a little over five hundred and twenty thousand. A really good year. Um, exhibit A three is just the same statement for the year before, fiscal year twenty-one. If you remember from my previous presentations, um, municipal government accounting is very convoluted, there are two sets of statements. So the first set of statements includes all of the assets and liabilities of the town. The second set of statements is what's known as the fund basis financial statements, but similar to how you guys budget. Um, there are no long-term assets or liabilities recorded on the fund level. You'll see down here at the bottom, it's right to use leased assets are excluded, our capital assets are excluded, and any is excluded from these statements. So the same general assets, we have about four-point-three million in total assets. About seventy-three thousand of liabilities. Our deferred inflows are the same as they were, these are our ARPA funds. So our fund balance at the end of June twenty twenty-two was almost three-point-eight million. This is your budget, this is the numbers that you're used to looking at on a budgeted basis. Your total revenues were one million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. Your total expenditure is about seven hundred and twenty. So your excess of revenues over expenditures is about five hundred and forty-three thousand last year. And exhibit A six is just the reconciliation of those two income statements on the fund level and the government wide. So this is where I was telling you, I I still, I don't know how this got through, um, the eighteen ninety-nine, it's, we'll get that fixed for you. Um, the next several pages, sixteen are, sixteen pages are the notes to the financial statements. And these really provide additional information about the financial statements themselves, the accounting policies, and more detail on some of the numbers that have been included. So I'm just gonna go over the ones that are new or different, so I'm gonna skip ahead to page ten. So as I mentioned, um, you guys had to record leases as the right to use those leased assets. So we picked up an asset for the office space that most of you are sitting in, about a hundred and thirty-one thousand. And then we're amortizing it over the life of the room, I'm sorry, the remaining life of the lease. So at the end of June twenty twenty-two, the reduction, um, was down to eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars. We also picked up the debt, which you'll see on page thirteen. So we owe landlord future amounts, right? We signed a lease that said we were gonna pay them for X number of years. Amount we owe at the end of June twenty twenty-two is this ninety-six thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Just as a reminder, the town, uh, village, I apologize, the village did elect to pay the win liability back i- in the installment, so we still have about a hundred and eighty-one thousand we owe on that. The next one I wanted to talk about is your fund balance, just as a reminder, you do have some assigned balances for particular purposes. We have the streets, half a million dollars, the walkability, five hundred thousand, some other capital projects, and then we have that million-dollar reserve. And last but not least, I think everybody, um, remembers the, um, the state of Maryland, uh, ARPA money, as I was talking about earlier, you received the first half, um, in August of twenty twenty-one. You received the second half, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand in August of twenty twenty-two. And as a reminder, you have until, um, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to, um, either spend those dollars or encumber those dollars. Uh, Michael shaking his head, I'm sure you're very familiar with this. Everybody knows those dates by heart. Um, and as a reminder, because Gatsby eighty-seven, um, was effective for this year, we did have to restate Ju-, uh, the twenty twenty-one financial statements to conform to the presentation, otherwise the numbers would have looked a little bit different from year to year because we have both in here. B one, exhibit B one is your, but it's actual, so your first column is the approved budget was originally adopted. The second column is the final budget, and then the third column is the actual amount. Um, the only thing really of note is, you know, income taxes, you guys continue to budget income taxes very conservatively. Um, and so there is a large variance, a positive variance though, which is the right way to go. So total revenues at seven ninety-three, and you received one million, two hundred and sixty-three, so variance of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And on the expense side, you budgeted for those, um, projects, and there were only about thirty-six thousand of actual expenditures. So you're to the good on the expense side as well, your total expenditures, budgeted three-point-two, actual seven hundred and twenty thousand. There is a small letter, a three-page letter that we do along with the financial statements, it's called the governance letter. I always say it's like the Cliff Notes version, if you're not going to read the entire fifty-page audit. Um, sort of gives you the highlights, it does mention here in the middle that we opted to a accounting policy, um, for leases. If we had any difficulties with, um, during the audit, this would give us an opportunity to talk about it. Does talk about the audit adjustments, and we did have a couple this year, um, who are sixteen proposed audit adjustments, and the net effect was to reduce net income by approximately four hundred and eighty-five thousand. I don't want you to be misled by that, most of that related to the funds. So, um, your bookkeeper did what most of them did and recorded it as revenue when it was received. Um, but we moved it to deferred income until it is earned, meaning you have to spend it before we can record it as revenue. Um, no disagreements with management, no other audit findings or. Um, no disagreements with management, no other audit findings or issues. So again, very clean audit report with very positive results for the town this year. Any question?
Uh I'd just like to make a comment that this, these audits are real. There was not one payment that we made that they let us do it without seeing the invoices. Uh and that's what Susan and I were scrambling. Uh sometimes there was a one payment with three or four separate invoices behind it. You gotta find each one to make sure that everything added up. So this is a true audit and uh nobody's going to jail around this table.
Gosh, Jesus. Okay, yeah. Um thank you, Arthur, and thank you, Eva, very much for all your hard work. Uh very much appreciated.
Thank you, guys.
Question, but I wouldn't defer if there's anyone else. Eva, thanks in expressing the sentiments of everyone Herculean. Marvelous work, and I know my wife will be happy uh that I probably will be coming home and not going to the local uh uh whatever they call it, uh pan or something lockup. So a quick question for you. This is very in the weeds, and again, it could be taken offline another time. But I know that um as residents, uh when they look at at these reports, and again, I know everyone is so grateful to know we're in such solid financial standing. Um the in the weeds of understanding how one, what is the denominator? When we look at um, let's say, additional services for the community. So for example, um you know, there are some numbers that we know roughly around thirty five thousand dollars for community events, right? But we also have other numbers that we are working with, you know, for example, annual expenditures, net position, and those are very different denominators, right? One is roughly around seven hundred fifty thousand, another is four point five million, and that really changes what that ratio would be. And again, there's a perception out there that there's a lot of money, and perhaps there are things we could do. So just from your perspective, do you have, you know, some advice in terms of how we should be looking at the denominator of of we're, you know, how we look at it's, you know, a a recreation or community service budget? And then what's a good ratio for us to to be looking at?
So you guys have um on exhibit A one, that net position, that four point five million is probably the best sort of reserve. I know Arthur and I have had this conversation a million times in the past. You know, what is our reserve? So if you look at, and let me share my screen one more time, because I like that, it's points and numbers. Um. Let me go back here, share. If you go back to exhibit A one. I mean, they're only forty one pages long. You guys have just a real short set of financial statements. Um this number here is your net position. So your assets, all of your bank accounts and and all of the receivables, and then you pay all of your bills. And then you reduce it by the nine hundred and twenty seven, because we cannot spend our equipment, right? We can't spend our buildings and our equipment and our computers. Three point five nine seven really is what's left over. That is your reserve. That would be the cash that you have available to spend. So every year you would up the budget. So think, I think, uh I think your answer would be you're balancing your budget, right? Seven hundred and ninety three thousand for revenue. Your expenditures are a little bit higher because you have in this. Um but that's where you can increase it because Arthur, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys budget very conservatively on the income taxes.
Right. Yeah, we we keep, I'm an economist, looking at the possibility of a recession any moment now. Uh it hasn't happened, uh and our tax revenues keep coming in higher than expected. But I think that's a reasonable thing to expect over the next year.
Sure. I think though, I think um with a half a million dollar income in fiscal year twenty two, some of that could be um used for additional programs and you're, you're probably working on next year's budget already, right? Um you know, so I think you run it, you're, you guys are like a couple of my other municipalities where you've built up this reserve. Now what are you gonna do with it?
No, thank you. And obviously, these are questions well beyond uh the audit.
Yeah.
And again, because of all the Herculean work of of Arthur and Susan and then your verification, I mean, we're in phenomenal shape and and you know, it's a, as they say, it's a good position to be in to perhaps think about, you know, are there some very meaningful impactful programs uh that our residents, you know, would want that we could afford to do.
And you can always establish a larger reserve, um which, you know, I love economists, Arthur. You could always establish instead of a one million dollar reserve, you could establish a two million dollar reserve and then eat into that three and a half million. You know, um you do have some big, bigger projects that are in your budget, those walkability and the streets, you know, so some of those would also eat into it. It's just at what pace do you wanna spend it? But you also have the ARPA funding, which is available. Um and and I think there's more out there, so.
Our projects that we're working on with other municipalities jointly.
Yeah.
Great. Well, thank you again so very much.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Patience and sticking around, so I really appreciate it.
You guys made it easy.
Yeah, thank you. Speaking, speaking around, um I, Doug is still on for our building administrator's report. You wanna unmute yourself? I think he's on the phone as well, yes.
Uh good evening. At thirty five oh six Bradley Lane, in November, the applicant requested an extension of the building permit to the end of February. Uh we've contacted them to see if they're gonna be completing by that date. They think they will, but they say they're still having supply issues, so uh we'll keep track of that. At thirty four seventeen and thirty four nineteen Cummings, uh that's where they're removing the house and adding two houses. We've reviewed the plans and giving them some comments. We're waiting to hear back. At uh one twenty Quincy Street, the village issued a permit in February of twenty twenty two. The work is ongoing and the applicants have requested a building permit extension, and I believe Michael extended that permit today or tomorrow, whenever the applicant comes in to sign it. At one fifty one Quincy, they've uh got a permit to remove the existing house and construct a new house. That construction is ongoing. At thirty five hundred Raymond Street, the homeowners have requested a permit to do some extensions on the on the back of the house. Uh the village permit was issued on January sixth. The work is ongoing. And we've requested a wall check to make sure that they're complying with the village setbacks. And uh two new projects that Michael and I have talked about with the the owners, thirty five oh two Taylor and thirty five fifteen Taylor. Uh they haven't come in with a permit yet, but they're talking about making some improvements to those two lots. That concludes my report.
Thanks, Doug. Any questions? Any additions? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Doug.
Doug, would you stay on for the next bullet point as well, please?
Sure.
Uh okay, so the next, the next uh agenda item is related to an ongoing issue at the, at the dead end of Quincy street where there's a a a I guess a challenge faced by by residents parking, for sure. I think we have that on every village street. But also because of um the parking on both sides and the narrowness of of what is left for vehicles to pass through and an incident a little while back where an emergency vehicle could not get through. Um because often I admit to doing the same thing. I don't park right at the curb. I'm a little beyond where where I need to be. Um we've had discussions with residents uh in that that part of Quincy. Um and I've asked Michael and uh and Doug and others to to just kind of look into what could be done, um and looking for consensus that allows for parking not to be eliminated, but for uh emergency vehicles to be able to, or snowplows or what have you, to get through there. Uh even when both sides of uh that dead end part of Quincy have cars parked. So if you wanna take it from there, we've had now um our our regular, who were there, uh who the folks?
Yeah, so thank you. Um we've had a number of conversations about this, including with our um paving contractor um who fills in our potholes and prepares our roads, Mike Veers. Um and also Doug and I, and I met with and spoken about this with our traffic engineer, um Joe Cuthro as well. Um originally, there was kind of two options that we were looking at um and considering, um even though knowing we didn't want to remove parking, so that took one right off the table right off the bat. Um the other idea that came up was to widen the, from Oxford Street all the way to the dead end, was to widen the street to the south of of Quincy Street. Um there's a curb and then there's a, the sidewalk is about three feet off of the curb, and there's a little grass strip with a couple of trees in that strip. Um that was, once we were on site with with Mike Veers, the paving contractor, that was determined to be pretty difficult to pull off. One, there's a number of fully grown trees in that spot. And two, there's already a driveway coming out of that section that's already at a pretty steep grade. So you'd have to, if you remove three feet, you would actually have to go even at a steeper grade. Um onsite, um we came up with an idea that we think will work, which is to remove about sixty feet of curb between Oxford and that first driveway, that only driveway off of that strip to the south and and set those two parking spaces that are there, those legal marked parking spaces up against the sidewalk. That would require about sixty feet of curb to be removed and that grass strip to be removed. It would, it would require removing one tree, and that sidewalk is already buckled there with some um where some tree roots have grown into it. And it would require removing that sidewalk and lowering it down to curb height as well. Um Mike Veers provided a estimate for what he thought that would cost um all in told, and that came to over thirty thousand dollars. Um and I think I have that number somewhere. Um his estimate was thirty one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Um I I spoke with our attorney, Ron Bolt, who's on the call, about um whether our current contract with Mike Veers is, would include this work, and it was determined that it does not. So we would actually have to um put this out to a public bid um if we want to go in this direction. So I um wanted to bring it up to you all and seek some direction from you all, um and approval to go through that process. I would write an RFP with 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 Ron's help, a request for proposals. And that has to be posted for forty five days legally, because this, we're estimating this is gonna be over the ten thousand dollar limit.
So from my understanding, having been contacted by various neighbors, this has created a lot of heartburn over the course of the last couple of years just based on not wanting to lose partner spots and also wanting to provide for the public safety uh for residents at that end of of Quincy. And this seems like a a great consensus uh moment here. And and in my conversations, I see one person from Quincy on. Maybe there are others that I don't recognize. I see Howard. Um based on my kind of shuttle diplomacy back and forth with the the pro parking, but also the pro access for emergency vehicle uh factions, I wanna call them, but that sounds a little too hostile. Uh this seemed like a great resolution and and um and scratches the itch and uh resolves it.
Quick question. Uh the contractor recommended it. The traffic engineer agreed. That's a solution.
Correct.
And uh anyone else chiming in on that?
Um Doug and Doug's on the call, um so he so he can, he can speak.
Look, it looks good for Doug.
Yeah, yeah, and um the traffic engineer is familiar with state law as well as what what's required to do this, and um it is, it does pass the the smell test.
Yeah, it looks like a no brainer.
It does require removing one tree, um and that would be an additional cost that we would have to go through our. And there's a process with the state as well to get get a tree removed, so that is unfortunate, um but.
Can't get something for that. Yeah. So I guess eh does the council agree that uh we should, we should ask uh Michael to proceed with uh putting together an RFP um that that would be put out to in various.
And Ron, maybe you can speak up here. Do they need to vote to recommend this, or um can I just go ahead and proceed?
Yeah, the the council can instruct you to issue the RFP by consensus, you know, unless any council member wants to put it to a vote.
Yeah, I think go do it. Go do it. Exactly. Okay.
Excellent. The only thing um to put out there, I think Paula is the tree manager, is uh just to be in touch with her if not already to about the fact that we're moving a new tree.
Yeah, Paula and our arborist as well.
Yeah.
When you need me involved in that.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much, uh Michael, for all your work on that and Doug as well. Really appreciate it and 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 Howard and and Evan and others from Quincy who've been vocal and and passionate about it. I'm I'm glad we found a a solution here and and we will move forward uh as best and as expeditiously as we can based on uh laws uh of the village. So thank you very much.
And thanks, Doug.
Yep, thank you, Doug. Thanks again. Um okay, we'll uh proceed to committee updates. Thank you for sticking around. Keith, why don't you, why don't you start, Keith, or Keith, I think you might be the the quickest possibly.
I think so.
Okay.
He's the party of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. At the uh last meeting, uh we, we discussed the, and we're looking forward to the March fifth event at the LaFerme Restaurant and uh with Michael's help, we're in the process of putting that together. And uh that's gonna be a very exciting time. We're gonna have good food and entertainment.
Entertainment.
Everybody's gonna be, everybody's gonna be very happy. And then the other.
So order.
The other uh.
Go do it.
The other subject that we uh talked about was the list serve. And um there were a group of residents that asked for the committee's help, put through the communication systems in the village of Martin additions. They said that good accessible avenues for neighborhood communication are an essential public service. Without good communication channels, it's hard to have community engagement. Uh these uh said residents asked about two related components, a basic list serve that works and an online space for community discussion. Both need to be accessible for all VMA residents. Uh here's the uh interim progress report that was worked out. Number one, Gene Spurling is now working with the former list serve manager, Bill Liebovich, to try to repair the existing list serve to try to make sure that all residents can join it and post messages. If it can't be fixed, Gene will help set up a new list serve, excuse me. It will continue to be independent of the village government. Number two, community discussions. Constant contact provides one way communication from the council and staff to the residents, but does not provide any method for lateral communication among the residents themselves. There's no village-wide way for people to share neighborhood issues and suggestions with each other. An online discussion space that all residents have access to would really benefit community engagement. The engagement committee recommends that the council ask Michael, our village manager, to look into the ways to structure VMA's public communication system. Other towns and government agencies are dealing with the same issue. How can VMA provide an open, easily acceptable online channel for the residents to share public input and have good discussions about community issue? And I I thank you for for listening to that. And um I didn't really compose that. That basically is my mother guys, Philip Hurst and Paul McGowan, because I'd be lost without those two guys. And then uh lastly, I wanna ish say many thanks to Gene Spurling, who was for many years from nineteen eighty one to nineteen eighty eight, and then from two thousand six until July of twenty fifteen, our village manager here, who did an outstanding job for her current work on the list serve, and to Bill Liebovich, who was also on the council some years ago for running it over the years, and to Josh Bauer. And to Josh Bowers for creating it. And my time is up. I thank you for yours. And after Lori, I'm going to bid everyone a very pleasant greeting.
Thank you, Keith. All right, Lori. Ethics.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Don't have to, but.
Well, so. They want to see Laura.
Well, the camera, you'll you'll be, you'll be on camera.
All right, to follow up on that ethics amendment that the council voted to introduce at the January meeting. I just want to confirm that the committee has received no additional comments concerning the amendment, either in writing or in person at our meeting earlier this week. So to date, out of seven opportunities in public meetings to comment, there have been four residents who avoid their opposition. Moving on to tonight's agenda, I'm here to share our committee recommendations that the council, considering the resolution included in tonight's meeting pocket, which would modify the current policy governing votes of office by removing the notarization requirement, with the exception of council members who Maryland law requires their forms to be notarized. For a brief history, this topic was initially raised at both the December Ethics Committee and December Council meetings. Based on our experience of going through the document review process a couple of times now, the committee identified the notarization requirement as an impediment for some volunteers to submit their required forms in a timely manner. Removing the notarization requirement will modernize the process by allowing volunteers to submit their forms electronically. The resolution was drafted by Ron at Andrew's request. Jeff, I'm just going to repeat this part, but if we went over it at the beginning of the meeting because our resident had a comment, but I just want you to be aware that the updated policy also includes the newly revised conflict of interest questionnaire. As you may recall, last term, the committee presented the council a newly designed conflict of interest form. At the time, Jeff, you requested that Ron Bolt review the form. And he did, and he made a minor edit to question eight, which specifies the duty to update the form and submit it to the ethics committee rather than to the council chair as the committee had originally proposed. Finally, at our meeting earlier this week, the committee discussed the scheduling of future ethics committee meetings and decided that meetings would be held on a less frequent basis, which federal lines this with the practice of of other local ethic bodies. We believe that the potential reduction in time commitment to serve on the ethics committee will be appealing to a broader pool of future volunteers. Going forward, the committee will work administratively via email and schedule meetings as required by Maryland open meeting act. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the resolution in tonight's packets. Right, anything else?
Okay, I don't see any questions. Ron, anything you want to add?
No.
Okay, you just leaned in, so I figured maybe maybe.
No, I was just anticipating a question.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Now, you're going to vote on that tonight?
That's 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 next on the on the agenda. So let's let's go to George for election committee updates.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Election committee updates. We had our most recent meeting with some of our new members. We think it was a very productive, very positive meeting. We're on a good track. Committee members are currently working on drafts that will be circulating and pressing to approving on the process for updating the voter roll. The instructions and conversation and key points that we wish to have covered in the conversations with whatever the election service provider vendor that winds up being selected is just so its instructions on both physical materials such as the ballots, but as well as processes that we wish to have in place or that we are going to require to have in place this year, especially including a couple of ones that are corrective issues based on our lessons learned from last year and as well the year before, as well as our communications calendar. The first thing that people residents should be seeing on the communications calendar is going to be on February twentieth is the opening of the nominations period. So there will be probably some communications next week notifying people that the nominations period is about to open. The nominations period will be open between February twentieth and March twenty second. So people should start seeing communications about that next week with the official announcement of the opening of the nominations period on the twentieth. I think that is it for committee activity. I know there was a some resident comments at the beginning as well as a communication to the council related to ballot curing. And the requirement set in place on that, I'm happy to address any of the comments, questions as the council considers that.
Please, do you mind responding to some of the concerns that have been expressed?
Yeah, so I can say it is not the committee taking a, as was described earlier, a narrow view of things. The rules are pretty explicit. If you are looking at the election plan in election procedures, sections or subsection six, so that's line one ninety nine of the plan says, the service provider shall count the votes on May twenty fourth. It says, section seven, the next one, on May twenty fourth, the election service provider shall examine the ballot envelopes without opening them and identify non, it says non confirming. I think we had missed that as a typo during the editing process where it should say non conforming, but non conforming envelopes and then goes into the process allowing for ballot curing. To me, that's not a narrow read. The read is pretty explicit that we can't identify non conforming ballots until the twenty fourth. But we also have to count ballots. All the ballots have to be counted on the twenty fourth. So that doesn't leave us time.
Yeah, the twenty fourth, that's that's at day break, right? We're talking the beginning of the day. So in theory, you have the day to do this. You know, five o'clock, I pick up the ballots.
No, that's on the twenty third.
Ballots are due evening of the twenty third.
Right, I'm sorry. So you have you have the the twenty fourth until what time? When is the the it's usually six P M. I wondered, what did we say?
You don't, there's, sorry. In the plan, there's not enough, there is a due date on the twenty third for when ballots have to come in. There's not a specific time for ballot counting on the twenty fourth. Typically, that's been in the evening because that's when you can have everyone available because you need the committee members. The candidates slash their designated observers, any residents who wish to observe. So typically, that has been in the evening, but there's technically no requirement that it has to happen in the evening. It's just the rule, the election plan says the ballots have to be counted on the twenty fourth.
Yeah, I guess that that was my recollection that it was an evening process when when all the candidates were on Zoom and and the official counting began. I mean, to me, I guess, obviously, it gives the election committee, you know, the the ability to to instruct or to to have these ballots cured throughout the day, reaching out to residents in every which way possible. I think that's a reasonable about reasonable amount of time to have, you know, it's not twelve hours necessarily, but many hours during the day to do that. That's my initial, my initial reaction. I mean, this is not a huge. You know, we're a small municipality, you know, with the, and I know and I understand what Susan's point. You know, what the county does. You know, there are millions of people in the county, so it could take days, but I think.
I think how few needed to be cured in the past.
Well, there's a question of definition here. As I heard the discussion, the canvassing ends on the day of the county. There there's an opportunity, they they give time for all the ballots to come in from all the different sources, the foreign and the servicemen and so on. When they get them and they start counting, the canvassing has ended at that point. So as I understand it, and I could be, I could be misunderstanding or the information could be wrong. So with us, that would be the canvassing ends on the day that all the ballots are collected. That would be the twenty third. And then they count and cure that day. There's no, there's not an extended period of time, but that time, that canvassing has ended at that point.
Right, right. So that's that's when they, that's the deadline of of ballots having to been received.
No, and cured. Because they they do it until the canvassing end. Well, it turns out that in the last, in the history of mail in ballots of Martin addition, we have not had any such cases. So we may be talking about a zero set here, an empty set.
So I can, I can add.
Yeah.
I can only speak for the last two years, which I know are two of the three years that we've had the full mail in due to pandemic. Last year, we had zero ballots that required curing. The year before, there were several that because the plan had been written two years ago in a way that did not allow for us to address cured ballots. I think there were four total that depending on is a separate question for Ron relating to rules about unsigned ballots, because that is something that is the rules say we have to abide by county and state restrictions. State law says we can't cure unsigned ballots. So there's a separate question on that. But so two years ago, there would have been, I think, four that would potentially have required curing that were unable to be cured because the plan two years ago did not allow for curing. And I also think, yeah, the other question relates to canvassing because I know canvassing also looks a little different for us because our election day is May tenth. And so I think we wind up having almost two weeks of period for when we are allowing ballots to come in from that alternate slate. But the plan is a little different because I think, and Ron can probably correct me if I'm wrong. The county, I think, can look at those on a rolling basis, whereas the election plan, as it's written, says the provider doesn't look at ballots for conforming status until in this case, the twenty fourth. Last year, the plan was written where they did that check the night before. Like the night they all came in, they were due at five. There was, if there were any, we would gather and we would examine them that night and give us twenty four hours to do the curing process. This year, the plan changed that to move it, and I believe that was based on a resident comment that had suggested that edit to move that first check for non conforming envelopes to the same night as counting. And that was a resident edit that the council then adopted. So last year, we had a day that we didn't wind up needing. This year, yeah, we're in a position that everything seems to be on one day.
Ron, want to say something? Anything to add to that, Ron, from your point of view?
No, other than the the village election plan does say that with respect to curing, we're going to implement state and county regulations regarding curing. And I don't think there are any written regulations, so I'm looking into that. I know there's procedure in the works to allow curing by by text message, but it's not a regulation per se yet. And and last year, you know, the county did reach out. The county begins its canvassing as soon as the ballots are coming in, which the village would have to figure out a way of of doing that because in the past, I think it might be fair to say that no one was touching the ballots until they were counted on election day. So that's all I would add at this point.
Yeah, I think there was all.
Issue about that unsigned ballots according to state law, is this the correct interpretation? My interpretation that unsigned ballots cannot be cured?
My unresearched opinion is, yeah, that that's correct. You know.
So the issue is a ballot that comes in with a name that's signed Mickey Mouse. And then we have to decide something about that. That that seems to be, I mean, my imagination may be deficient here. But if the state says unsigned ones are not allowed because of the way the law is written, then it's this other other things that that have to be cured. And I'm not sure just what those other things might be.
Yeah. I'd I'd have to look into that. I mean, we had one ballot dropped off at the village office that didn't bear any indication of who it was from. So there was no way for it to be cured because we didn't know who submitted it. I mean, if we had some sort of identifying information, but no signature.
Well, there's a number on it. There is a registered number under it's ballot. And that can be traced back to the person who was assigned that number.
Yeah, I I I think unlike, you know, county, federal, I think the argument has been made, and I think it's it's a fair one that that the election committee has the latitude, the flexibility in this little village with those with those numbers that are assigned to envelopes to at least reach out and and see if this was an honest honest mistake, if everything else conforms. But you know, so that's my my personal opinion. But again, we've come across either zero times or just a few times where where we've actually had to address this issue. Anyone else in this room have any comments? If not, Marty, go ahead, George. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I would just add two quick things. One is if any changes are being made to checking ballots as they come in or potentially it having to be something that's the conforming check happens early in the day. Section seven of the plan, you'd need to take a look at that because that requires that the election service provider display potentially non conforming ballots to the committee, and the committee then has to vote on it, which means doing it on a rolling basis gets a little trickier because then it's one where the committee, the designated observers and the public have to have that opportunity to observe that process, and we would have to schedule functionally one of those every night. And we might not wind up using it, but you'd almost have to do that. So if there are changes being made, taking a look at making sure that section seven, we're not getting into a logistically unworkable position. And then I would say the other one from just on behalf of the committee members, I think what we will try to do regardless of the approach the council takes in terms of updates, non updates, however we're interpreting, we will, one, continue to follow the plan as it is written, we will and follow county and state election law as we get the guidance from Ron. But then the other one we will do is make a concerted effort in line with kind of what we did last year of making sure the communications outreach efforts throughout the election period from the committee are very explicit about helping people, remind people this is what you need to do as part of your ballot. So hopefully, we can stay at what we had last year where this is not a problem because everybody fills out their ballots correctly. So making that a focal point of our communications, if it is something where we have a truncated curing period, then we will make that work and we will try and communicate as best we can to make sure that everyone is aware of the requirements and aware of what that process might look like, where if you are potentially concerned that your ballot might not have been this, then these, this would be what the committee would be able to do at that point to help cure it for you. So.
Thanks, George. Good. Marty?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this discussion very much. I think that the the key language here is this language that says the committee should make a prompt, reasonable and meaningful attempt to cure all ballots that it can be cured and count them. The goal is to make sure that all the votes get counted. And this proposal or suggestion from the residents is simply to make sure that the committee has the flexibility to actually do that because that's the primary responsibility here to make sure that the you know, hopefully, there will be zero ballots that need to be cured. George, I appreciate you saying you're going to really emphasize that messaging. But if there are some to be cured, I mean, it's not a big deal to use the language that's right there in paragraph ten of that same section. And back in twenty twenty, we actually did hold up the certification of the election and have a preliminary report from the vendor is the first year we used eclectic. And the committee had some pretty serious questions for eclectic. We wanted more information about how they'd done the counting. And we went back, we had, we waited, we looked at the review, it says you will review the report, the vote count report from the twenty fourth and address any remaining issues, valid issues, vote issues. And we did have some vote issues. So eclectic ended up going back and checking the questions that we'd asked. And then we got a final report two days later. So that that provision has actually been used. It was very helpful. The vote count did change in response to our questions and our requests for more information. So there was a preliminary vote count on the counting date and then a final report two days later after they. two days later after they checked to, you know, to answer our questions. So that that's a precedent we already had here in our meager three years of mail voting. And I think that provision is the one that the residents looked at and said, well, if ballots aren't cured that night because you couldn't reach the resident to let them know that they that they had a problem, um, that it was simply fair to the committee to give them an extra at least couple of days. And the the residents talked about it and said, well, maybe, you know, three days would be most with most you would need. Because hopefully we will have not have a whole lot to be to be cured. But I think it is, you know, important to give the committee the flexibility to do that, and I think section ten already does give them that flexibility when it says address any remaining valid issues. Well, if somebody hasn't been able to be contacted, that's a remaining valid issue because that ballot should should really be counted if it can be. So this was just a request for a clarification from the council to say that, yeah, the the committee could take an extra day under that provision in section ten. And I hope the council will prove that because I think it is important to count every vote. So thank you, and and we're asking for the clarification to give the committee that ability to follow up um in a way that is, what they call it, you know, meaningful and reasonable, so.
Thank you, Marty. Thanks, Marty. Uh, Ron, do you want to? You're leaning in again.
Yeah. Yeah, so I just found that yeah, I would agree with George. On under Maryland law, if the ballot's not signed, it's going to be rejected. There was a bill introduced last year, House Bill nine six three, that would have set up a cure provision for ballots that are not signed. And it and it provided the election board was supposed to reach out. And then there was a a signature verification statement that the voter could sign to attest that their ballot was legitimate and and then the the ballot could be counted. That bill did not pass, so the the law hasn't changed.
Okay.
But that's not to say you can't come up with your own provision on a, you know, local basis as to
Right.
way to to cure unsigned ballots.
The county does cure unsigned ballots, by the way, it has for some time. Um, and they have their procedures laid out. I think Susan read earlier what those are.
Thanks, Marty. Susan?
Hi, um, it sounds, um, I I was heartened by what you said, George, that it sounded like in the past, there has been a way to, um, like, maybe there was kind of a, on a rolling basis, they were looking at these before and or or okay, or not, okay. But but it gave me, it it made me think, would it make sense if you're not going to adopt the language, which I think is easy to do of the residence petition, because I think it's it's excellent language. Um, could you say something to the effect of one week ahead? We will allow the committee and candidates to, along with the election um provider, to observe any non-conforming envelopes of ballots and to address those in the cure, to address them uh as needed through the curing process. Um, you could say one week ahead and one day ahead of counting the ballots. We could, you could look at any non-conforming envelopes to address them as needed, so you don't have to have this squishy time. You can be looking at about the envelope ahead of time, you know, there's one. So then, when you come to the day of, you could, you don't have to have as long afterwards, maybe twenty-four hours if you want. But if if the real genuine concern, and I I think that we're all committed to fair elections where every vote gets counted, and nobody wants to bother to do a re, you know, a whole new election if it's by three or four votes that makes a difference. And we know there have been elections that close, and we have had four, you know, three or four disqualified in the past um ballots. So if we're all committed to fair elections where every vote should count, let's try to figure out a way to to make this happen. I don't, it doesn't seem, you know, Ron, I I don't quite understand where you're coming from when you're saying that. I mean, we know the practice at the county level is to cure ballots that do not have a signature. That is the practice. That is what is happening. And 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 we've heard about that practice from outreach workers at at the Board of Elections. I don't, I don't think that we need to spend our legal fees determining, like, we're not putting up a, you know, a challenge to the the written election laws of the county. So whatever they say, if the practice is doing it, and we're saying we want to do that in our election practice, I'm not sure why we're going down the rabbit hole of finding this in writing. You know, we know they do it in practice. We said that that we're committed to doing that. We have the flexibility at our municipal level to put this, to be committed to counting each ballot through the curing process. So I think that I think we can make it happen if there's a a real willingness to do that. Thank you.
I I just can't believe we're having this conversation again. I agree. We 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 have that flexibility and 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 so at any rate, okay, George, and then Peter, and then I'd like to, I'd love to move on.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, um, based on Susan's question. In the past, it has, there has, it's not been different in the sense that we never looked at ballots on a rolling basis as they came in to identify non-conformity. I, it's my understanding certain states will do that. Um, certain states explicitly will not. They can't look at anything until it's election night. Other states will look at it as it comes in. That's a state level decision. The last, I can speak for the last two years, and my understanding of twenty twenty, based on review of the committee files, is they don't look at them on, we have never looked at them on a rolling basis. What we did was the plan last year allowed for us to look at all of the ballots at once the night before the vote counting, which was after the voter deadline. So, yeah, sorry if I, there was confusion caused by my comment, but we've never looked at them on a rolling basis before because of any number of potential issues.
Okay, Peter?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to, first of all, to Ron's point that the law, Maryland law says we shall not count unsigned ballots. No one is proposing to count unsigned ballots. What we are doing is attempting to obtain the signature when the voter has failed to sign it the first time. So what we'll do is go back out and actually obtain either the signature or verification from the voter that is a legal substitute. Um, secondly, um, of course, Montgomery County, as we all know, is part of the state of Maryland. Montgomery County has an excellent legal department. Um, and the idea that Montgomery County is in violation of Maryland law seems implausible to me. It's it's not not plausible. So if Montgomery County is and has been has been counting, uh, has been curing ballots for some years now. Uh, the idea that they are in violation of state law is just not plausible to me. So it suggests to me that if Montgomery County has been doing it for some years, we're we're not talking about a violation of law. Um, and secondly, uh, thirdly, excuse me, uh, the absence of legislation. So the, we have this apparently a state law about unsigned ballots. Um, but we don't have a law that says specifically we may cure ballots. The absence of legislation does not mean we may not do it. It means that it, since it is not forbidden, it is allowed. And so I conclude that there is no ambiguity that curing ballots is entirely within the law in the state of Maryland. And uh we are not in any way either uh counting unsigned ballots or violating the law law by curing ballots. Thank you.
And I wasn't suggesting that the county was operating contrary to the law. My point was just the village election plan says we will follow state and county regulations with respect to curing. And I haven't been able to find any regulations. I have read newspaper articles describing the election board's practices. I've reached out to the election board to see if those practices are in writing. I haven't heard back. If anyone else has those, I I'd love to see them. And again, as I said, it doesn't mean the village can't do what it wants to do regardless of what the state or the county is doing with respect to curing.
Thank you, Ron. I agree.
Thank you, Peter, Susan, Marty, Ron, everyone. I think this uh this conversation with George, this conversation will be ongoing and and I, again, like I said, I I think uh the village, the election committee will, you know, has the ability to address this in a in a way we have in the past, and and hopefully with all the education efforts that will go into this election in advance of and during um that we will not have to deal with this at all. Um, so thank you uh for for all the committee updates and the resident feedback. Moving on to the next agenda item, uh, discussion and possible introduction of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash one to amend policy regarding taking of oaths and disclosure of conflicts of interest to remove the requirement for a nodary to administer the oath. I've now witnessed many times that it's delaying uh the process of getting committees uh stood up or whatever the term is. So um I think this is, this is a uh, this makes sense to me, so if uh if anyone on the council would like to move to. Okay, on to seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Not opposed, I'm just abstaining.
Stay, okay. Death of stains. All right, moving on, moving on. Um. This, yeah, so now, uh, considering a motion to host community listing session of the introduced ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten dash one. And that's the one to amend the ethics ordinance to expand the definition of official to include members of all committees and add our committees appointed by the council. Jeff, this is something you've asked to do. So please, uh, you have the floor.
Thanks. I know it's uh not quite the bewitching hour, but it's it's late, so I'll I'll make it uh short and brief. But just a couple of comments before I make the motion. Um, I'm going to, oh, you are.
You want me to make you host?
Please.
Cause.
I just wanted to flash a few things just to make it uh pretty smooth.
No flashing.
Excellent, thank you. Great, so I just put together a few things um I wanted to just share as a sort of a basis of why it's important to have um a standalone forum. I know we've talked about that um there's opportunities at the committee meeting, but I think we've talked in the past about how at the committee meeting, they are tasked to do the amendment, and uh we know that uh from when this first time around, there were some attendance of well over forty, sometimes fifty people at the committee meetings. And there was a real feeling and desire to have a a a forum or a discussion of residents that wasn't part of the committee whose task is known to actually move forward on creating the amendment. The other thing which I think is important is recognizing that once we introduce the ethics amendment, that the next opportunity for the residents to have a forum is the day of the uh potential adoption vote. And I think that's also something that has come up in the past that residents felt. It creates a lot of pressure on them to have a forum the same day. It feels like a fate to complete. So the idea is we can separate that by a bit of time before the next council meeting to allow that sort of open, free and safe space to discuss things. Um, so a couple pieces, and and this is just my objective for today. One is I'll make that motion shortly about whether or not um the council agrees to have a separate standalone uh public uh forum or listening session to hear their thoughts on the proposed new ethics amendment. The other is, and um I shared, as Andrew and Ron and Michael know, I've uh shared some questions to Ron, and I'll flash them up. But um between now and that vote or potential vote on adoption is to have some in writing, some responses, just so that there's clarity. I think when we saw the last council meeting, we asked some questions. And, you know, we didn't quite have very specific answers, or it seemed like we were sort of thinking about it, developing it. And I think it would be very straightforward if we put those in writing, just so that there's a lot of clarity, and I'll flash those up. Some had to do with timing of information exchange, capping of costs, so on and so forth. The other piece, why I think it's important to have a forum are a couple of things that were already discussed. A couple of residents mentioned here, but I think um we've heard also residents loud and clear outside of of this discussion is that there are some information gaps. And um so for me personally, and again, I'm one of of five. For me to consider a vote on adoption, um and quite frankly, I think there's a lot of room to work here, because I think this is not about trying to undo what we have, it's trying to create tweaks and perhaps strengthen it. Um, you know, first, what's the impact? How do we know what the impact of the current ethics ordinance on resident volunteers? And I think I'd like to hear specifically from residents in a separate discussion what that might be. The other piece is just some level of support of for this expansion. I think, again, having an opportunity for residents to voice their opinions of not only what they feel the impact might be on the current ordinance, but is there going to be any uh further impact, perhaps, if it's now ex- extended to all resident volunteers? And so really, you know, end of the day, questions from Ron, um, and I think most of them are probably straightforward, is my guess. And then again, having some insight from the residents about how they feel about this um proposed expanded amendment. And so here are the questions that I'm listing that I shared with with Ron and would love to have, not now, this is just a a chance to, just so everyone sees it. And these were also shared at the last council meeting. So really about the information sharing and timing. So I think we discussed last time, it sounds like the council, we get the information after the committee has made some sort of initial determination and um really trying to understand.
Do you have a handout of this?
Um, I can, uh, we can provide it, yeah.
Oh, I'm like right now to follow along.
Uh, it's up there.
It's on screen. Okay, I'll just.
I mean, it's not, unless you have a computer.
Make it a PowerPoint presentation. You're in the, in the pre-presentation mode.
Of course, I'd be, I would, I would be delighted to. Let me, um.
You can't do it, he has to do it.
Yeah, unless unless you brought a laptop here.
It's not showing up, okay?
I'm not sure.
No.
Okay. Well, anyway, this was, this was, so so the information sharing and timing, have some clarity on that of when the council's informed about a complaint. Um, and the other piece is the costs associated. So I think in the last open meeting, we had discussed some questions about can the uh committee itself initiate and start to research or investigate? Um, and do they have the power to go directly to our village attorney and start to rack up some costs? So really, understanding a little bit more about that process, is there a cap? At what point do we become informed? The other piece is the dual submission. So we recognize that as a council, we also have some authorities specific to volunteers. So what happens if there's, you know, the chance that it gets submitted to us and the committee at the same time? So just understanding what that process is. The other piece is, um, I know that when this first came up, when it was first voted on and adopted what's in place today, there was a fairly robust discussion about looking at why this is focused on positions of public trust. And there was a discussion about some other research that had been taking place around nearby jurisdictions and and examples. And I think that's one of the reasons why we had restricted it. So really, just an understanding of, are there now examples where this has been expanded to all volunteers? Is this because our code, you know, is this, we we're we're looking to comply with our code, and that's part of the reason? So just understanding after a very thoughtful discussion of why it was focused on positions of of public trust, why and what is the real uh urgency and rationale to go beyond those positions of public trust? And then I think the other piece, which um is is a a question, and perhaps we could have some language of what this would look like, is so volunteers, as we know, are appointed by us. And, you know, in, when I think of conflict resolution, or if there is an issue in the workplace, whether it's an employee or um, you know, uh, someone, and usually and typically, that discussion happens between that employee and the supervisor. So one thing and one question which I have is, we appreciate the idea there's this ethics commission or committee that's been set up to review complaints. But understanding um for for any particular reason, again, these are, these are, these are issues that could be paramount to our village. I mean, that was why this was set up. This was not set up because there may be some, you know, modest issues. These were because these would affect the entire village. Because there may be some, you know, modest issues, these were because these would affect the entire village, and so the 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 question becomes. The timing, and if we have the ability, as we know, to remove. A a a resident volunteer. Then the question becomes, why are we not informed at the beginning? And if the ethics committee is going to do their independent. Research and investigation and come up. With whether or not there was an ethics violation, we certainly should have the ability, and we do. To actually look at this and say, you know what? We don't actually need a determination of. You know, where this comes when for the ethics, but if there is something that is that disruptive, whether it's the election committee or something else. We certainly should have the right. At the beginning to know that there's a complaint. And see if we could resolve it, or do we have to take immediate action? So those were the the key questions, and then finally, I know I beg your patience is. Some some final thoughts, common sense lens. You know. I would really just appreciate this this possibility of listening. To residents and hearing, we know when this was first approved. There was an overwhelming response of opinion about this, and I think we should give an opportunity now, since it's going to now be expanded to hear from residents. The other piece is I want to be very. Clear and careful. To appreciate, this is not a wholesale change, this is not. The idea that Jeff Blander is taking a blowtorch and saying, we have got to get rid of ethics, we don't like ethics. And or are we trying to get in the middle? Of the ethics committee doing their job, actually, that's completely opposite of this. What this is about is, at least from my perspective, the gap. In timing, in terms of understanding when a complaint is filed. When we hear about it. And what are the good reasons or justifications why as a council, we shouldn't be able to also take immediate action administratively? While the ethics committee is doing their job. And so there are other pieces here. Um that are are listed. But really, I just share this is again for some further discussion, I know that this is going to come up for a potential. Adoption vote, and so there'll be a time to talk about this, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to fill in some information, Ron. You know, really appreciate your your brilliance to be able to share, you know, some of your thoughts and writing over the coming weeks. And um you know, really just hearing a little bit more about. This suggestion and and thought process of the council, which already has existing authority. To be able to, at least for resident volunteers. To really be able to know in a in a timely way, what has come up and why? And how we could intervene administratively if we need to, so I just want to share that, and I I I I thank you all for your time. And with that said, um I'm gonna make a motion. To see if if other fellow members of the council would agree to host a. Uh separate listening or a public forum for residents between now and the next uh council meeting.
Before you. Go ahead.
Before we go, I think there have been many um mischaracterizations and inaccurate statements regarding. The unwillingness and and completely mistakes the actual numbers. Of uh residents to step forward to volunteer, it's been attributed. To the ethics ordinance. Uh when in fact, um a number of residents have told me they will never serve on the committee because they've seen how residents are treated. By people outside the committees, by. By residents who have an axe to grind. Bully, intimidate, mischaracterize their actions, label them as. Uh borderline illegal, um. That's the real reason we've had issues with the ethics ordinance. Uh with with supposedly getting um volunteers not to sign up. And interestingly, of the um. Only four people who have actually expressed any real reservations about. Expanding the ordinance to include the C E C. Three of them went on to serve on committees. And um two of them or one of them ran for um council twice, as you know, well. Um clearly, they were not deterred despite proclaiming. Repeatedly, that's. A huge deterrent to volunteer support. I think um. If we are to. Decide that we should give a listening forum. To um. Four residents. Basically, there there have only been four. Objections raised. You know that, four.
Susan, I I appreciate everything.
And and if we are to have a listening forum, because four residents who say the same thing at. Meetings and have been offered six opportunities. Discuss um their objections. In ethics many meetings and at council meetings. Um. If we're to say they deserve a listening forum. I think we're not really representing the democracy, I think at that point you become tyranny of. Like the handful of unelected.
Well, Susan, I I I I appreciate your thoughts, and I I would say, well, what we could do frankly is advertise it, and if there's a low. Response rate. Um then I think we could reconsider hosting, if if we end up with four folks, well. First of all, I think four folks is four folks, but I think let's also hearken back. To when the ethics proposal was first coming up, and we had in some meetings well over sixty residents. Who had been um so, but but but.
Because they believe that they were going to be, they were going to be thousand dollar fines and jail time.
Well.
It was.
I think.
They mischaracterized, so people got a little riled up.
Uh I.
Admittedly.
Well, with that said, like I said, I'm I'm I think I know your position very clearly, so yes. Uh and so do I. I did, I I I love ethics, in fact, uh I think I think I'm gonna get a T-shirt and hand it out to everybody. So the real question, the question becomes, and again, it's it's not only just the resident input, there were the questions which I had. Uh posed to Ron, which I'd load the the feedback on. So again, I'll put it up, you know, it's up to the council, if the council rejects it, I I appreciate it, but I just want to make a motion. Uh to call for a listening session between now and the next council meeting. On the expanded uh uh or proposed amendment to hear how what residents have to say.
And so.
I just have the timing.
So can can I just, just one thing, I just want to echo one thing that that. That that Susan said, and that is. The the feedback that I've received about the lack of excitement and serving on any committees. Um I I've never heard anything about ethics since the ethics, the expansion of the ethics ordinance. It's always been personality driven and or pressure and and I and bullying as well, I mean, I've heard that as well. Has nothing to do with this, I'm just saying, just to clarify the feedback that I've received, and I've received quite a bit. Um so uh and and here we are all serving and. We're not intimidated by the ethics ordinance.
It turns out that the former or the original ordinance was much more stringent.
Yeah.
But you could, I, we could have spent a year in jail.
Yeah, so so having said that. Um I do agree with with Jeff that even if it's just one resident who's concerned. That 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 concern needs to be addressed, now, does it need to be addressed by a public forum? Um it it doesn't sound like um. Uh the ethics committee received uh much feedback since it was offered that. Um uh in in recent council meetings. Uh and so so is it, is it worth the the time and energy and cost? To to have a listening session if there isn't. That much of an interest expressed.
Yeah.
That cannot be addressed by conversations with the council. Um in the first place, I guess. Well, how's this forum, right, and what is, how are we doing this forum, is the council running the forum, is the ethics committee running the forum, is Ron running the forum, how we?
We've had forums in the past, and so uh it would be the council. And then depending upon the number of council members who uh who are there, right? I think then it becomes, I think there are certain things, so if we've got a forum, we have over three, then. You know, there are just certain things that we need to be careful about, specific to. Discussions and policy and other things, but we we've hosted these listening forums in the past, and. In terms of cost, like I said, I'm I'm willing to do it, um and so I've done it before. And I I really don't see that as a barrier. And in terms of some of this other, you know, pieces, I look at it, let me turn it on its head. Hey, let's. Let's see, if everyone here is so right. And I'm not saying that in a in a in a negative or if everyone, if if I I, you know, this is a very, this is a validation moment, right? Is if we we send something out. And it's the same three or four people, and there is. No one else. Who is concerned. Then the case is closed, I I don't, I really don't see that there's any risk here other than finding out more information, and more information is good.
The timing. We have heard from a former election committee chair. That we should not hold events too close in proximity to an election, this is actually giving a forum, a platform. To someone who has run twice and may run again. On her, one of her favorite topics, I think that's problematic, I think it's, it looks like a political stunt, actually. I think.
Well, if that's the case, and if if we're so concerned about that, then let's delay until after the election and host it.
Uh.
I'm I'm just trying to, I'm trying to accommodate.
Yeah, uh there's one other issue. Jeff, your your concerns and issues. Are really quite independent of the.
Right.
Expanding the scope of the committee that we'll be voting on next month, you have a number of. Of I I think legitimate questions and issues, but has nothing to do. With the. What we're going to be voting on.
Well, Arthur, I would, I would respectfully disagree in that if there are right now some real. And I again, I think there are reasonable questions about process and other things, is that before we start to consider. How this should be expanded. And again, we thought very carefully about why it's focused on public trust. But we should at least give the consideration. Of understanding some of these pieces, it is again for me germane, because before I would consider expanding it to others. I certainly would want to understand how it applies in current day, and again. This could be a nothing burger, you know, if if Ron, you know, takes the time, maybe all the answers will be there and the clarifications will come out and. Everyone is is copacetic.
Alright, okay, I mean, to me, it's 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 not a. It's not a complicated. Um. You know, matter in terms of the expansion of what of what's being discussed, what did entail one committee. That's not a statutory committee, right?
Shall we move to a?
So so, hold on. Let's, oh right, so so I guess. If if you want to. And continue with this and 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 ask for us to have a motion to consider. A public forum between now. And our March council meeting, I mean. That that there's a timing issue also in terms of council member schedules, and who's going to be able to 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 attend. So.
Right, um we moved, we moved, right?
Sure, and like I said, I I again, uh you folks are all free, I want it on record, I made the motion, and also let's recognize that no matter what. And again, this was something that had come up um quite frequently uh during that year. Was the feeling of being able to have standalone resident discussions before. The day of introductions.
Right.
And so this is also just feeding into that of of why and so.
But having said that, and and not a single council meeting, or maybe not the last two, have I heard any resident comments?
I I, well, there were some today and also, I mean, to be fair. It wasn't, I mean, to be fair, we've been focused on the election plan, I mean, you know, listen, it's it's sort of like. When it becomes an issue, it becomes an issue, so, but uh uh, you know, let's make the motion, and then, you know, again, no matter what, you're gonna have that. Then time. Uh on the next council meeting where you expect to potentially uh adopt. And so by law, my understanding is, Ron, is, you know, there has to be a public forum, it was really the question of. Separating it so it's not the same day, so just being very clear, by law, we have to do. A public forum, but again. In this case. If we don't have a a a separate listening session, it's gonna happen the same day, and it just feels perfunctory as opposed to really. Authentically listening to voices before you go into that book, so with that said. I I am, I I I'm making a motion to host a separate listening session. On the proposed expanded amendment of the ethics uh ordinance. Uh and I introduce it before before the next uh standing open meeting.
Awesome.
Okay. Uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye. Opposed? Or something. And so, passes. And we'll 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 figure out a date.
And like I said, I think it's an opportunity, if two people show up, great, and again, I want to be very clear, I know we're moving on is. I I want it, you know, on the record and in good faith, this is not. An attempt. To try and undo. Or to to go back, it's really not, this is about some tweaks, some clarifications, and. At at the end of the day, quite frankly. I really want to vote for this, because I think it's it's a good thing, but there are some. Questions that I just have about, as I mentioned, specific to resident volunteers.
Okay, and so. I think, I think I I'm never gonna stand in the way of a public forum on any issue, and and when I said I I didn't hear much resident feedback. We've had comments, but you know, I guess I I'm comparing it to the outrage and the misinformation the first time around.
Ready to qualify, so first one, but here's, um we did find out tonight that there were no residents attending the ethics committee. Meeting on Monday at this meeting. There was no of this.
Yeah, so, well, that might be a very short forum.
Let's hope.
And uh and uh we'll we'll work.
We'll hear the same four people saying the same.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the consideration.
Yeah, okay, annual survey, annual survey.
Uh in the interest of time, we have the results in front of us and they've been distributed. Uh just one or two. Points, uh. One is that the uh number of respondents. Has gone up and down over time, I cannot find a trend, I. Looked whether whether what the month, the year, or whatever, uh it goes it goes up and down. Um maybe if we improve our communication, we can get more people to respond, but uh. Jeff has noted that about fifty percent. Of the household, we have had a question that had been considering. On putting out the comment, now, it turns out that we have had fifty-two pages. Of comments this year, uh. Somehow we forgot to put in character. We were using a new vehicle, had never used it before. Um and a lot of people wrote a lot of stuff. One of the reasons we hesitated to make it public. Is there are a number of ad hominem comments in it. And a number of incorrect statements. And I was not comfortable. Putting out a public document. Knowing that there were these kinds of statements in it. Uh and so uh. One issue is that when people were writing their comments. The because we purposely designed it, so we did not know. Who answered what to why, uh there was a presumption of some kind of confidentiality. Now, whether that refers just to the person, do we know who said so and so was a rotten pig? Uh does that matter?
You're not, you're not, either, or, okay, and and you are, you're brilliant. I'm not.
Wonder, wonderful. Right, just felt my last name. Uh as long as they have a agenda. Uh so the question is, do we publish? Do we put out everything, do we redact? Uh is there a notion here of presumption of confidentiality on the part of the people making their comments? That this is just going to the council, and not everybody is going to see what I'm going on about, what do we do about the uh? Uh incorrect allegations uh that are in there, uh what do we do about the ad hominem comments? So that's why you don't have the fifty-two pages in front of you. Uh and I will defer to my council member and our council. Uh for any advice.
I mean, I think going forward, um that that we could include. Um a a statement saying. Uh while your your. Guaranteed anonymity in your responses, we reserve the right to publish all responses publicly, however, we also reserve the right. As a council not to um uh release comments that are outright, you know, outright false or or. Or insulting, et cetera, I mean, that's something.
Correct. Comments that list residents by name.
And comments listing residents by name, right, right, slandering residents, all that. Um which I I don't recall, we found that this time around, but.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yeah. So. Um but for now, I would, I would feel more comfortable not releasing.
Uh you wanted to consider a redacted version? Uh, do you want to consider a redacted version? An edited version.
Uh, I think.
What?
It's not really useful. Um, for one thing, without the character limitations. A few people wrote essays, like they just freely went to town and, you know, use all their rhetorical flourishes and. And in many instances recycled the comments we heard at all meetings. That's not really illuminating in terms of offering the inside of his resident opinion. I think it would be really great to, to be able to have worthwhile, I mean, to, to use that input that is really. New and perhaps untapped, otherwise such as ways the council could use. Resources or offering new events. Like the Curb Alert Day, things like that are, are actually mainly community building instead of community tearing down.
I should, Ron, you've been leaning forward again. Anything else on the survey?
Take a look at it.
Well, I just, I just wanna put out, and again, I know it's late, so I wanna be very respectful on the time. I, I, I mean, look. There are folks, and I appreciate what Susan's sharing, but we've got a lot of new residents and I have it, I mean, here, again, I'm just looking and I'm pulling it up. You know, I, I'm a data geek at heart and I have all the comments, I've recoded it, I see it. I mean, I don't see for me personally, and again, I, I went through the data. I mean, I, there wasn't really anything here I felt we shouldn't share. So really, there's, there's two questions which don't have to be answered today. One, I, I like the idea, you know, what Andrew had suggested is look. You know, I think in the future, we should have some disclaimer that says, by the way, all comments will be posted publicly. And maybe there's some standard, like if there's derogatory language, but just something that says, by the way. These will be posted and just record, because right now that wasn't really, I don't think that was there, so there's that. The other piece, which again, doesn't have to be discussed right now, but you know. It, you know, without having to perhaps go through the equivalent of a FOIA. What if we do have some residents who wanna look at data, you know, could we make it like an administrative ask as opposed to they have to go through some legal piece? That's all I said.
Yeah, that could, uh, under, under a freedom of information. Uh, this probably, uh, would have to be, um, released.
Okay. All right, well. It's moving on. Okay, treasurer's report?
About the, um, the way it was done, um, about the way the survey was distributed. Last year, you were able to answer it twice. You disclosed. And were you able to do that with you?
I did not attempt, but I, I don't believe that there.
I can comment on that. Um, the tool that we use this year was Google Forms, um, and we did restrict it so that you couldn't. Click on the link from the same computer IP address. That's how it tracks that. Um, we did not ask for any disclosing information, so we don't know who the different people are. I don't even know. Um, the way to avoid that or remove duplicates would be to actually ask people to self-identify and then remove that information after the fact, but.
I mean, you could do it from one computer, run next door.
You could, it is possible.
Yeah, if you, if you were so determined to slew the results.
Yeah, and I would, I would say the number of submissions we've gotten this year is very standard, um, and Arthur put that together as well, and, and that's in there. Um, and. Yeah, the, the nature of the comments too, and the, the different results. I didn't see like two results come in back to back that looked very similar or anything like that. I guess I did spot check it first.
Just like with the election plan, I, I, I would. I would hope that, uh, there are no conspiracies in this village to, to defraud, uh. The public here, um, and, and lack of transparency and or somehow trying to.
And if I can make one more comment about the survey, I think, um, next year, we probably wanna take a, a, a thorough, more thorough sound editing it and, and writing it in such a way that's. There's a couple of questions where it's unclear if they're answering the first part of the question or second part of the question. That's called a double-barreled question, and there's just some things we can do like that. Um. Yeah, and then, and then as a matter of practice, I, I hope that if we're asking for feedback, that we're also doing something with it. Um, re- reporting it out is an actionable item, but doesn't actually change anything in, in the village. So there's a number of. Comments about things, services that we could add or, or, um, things that we could change. Um, so, so. I'm looking for direction out of this. If you all see anything that you want to focus on, we have a budget season coming up, so we can definitely start looking at some stuff.
There were questions that people wrote. Raised, uh, like, what happened to the walkability report? Wasn't there a safety committee? A number of specific questions. Well, the one, there was one question I can answer right now. Somebody said. We put up a sign on the stop sign at the end of coming that said Rollingwood, and that's not Rollingwood. In fact, Rollingwood's put up a sign. And they should know where Rollingwood is. Uh, so I'm, in, in person at the end of coming. It, it's a Rollingwood sign, it was.
We have a police force there to take care of that.
So, I, I have a good idea. We go through mine it again, look for this.
For recommendations. I think there's been a lot of proposals that have been floating out there for a long time, and we've never kind of decided, are we gonna act on this? Are we not going to act on it? Which just kind of leaves it kind of vague.
I think it was the fifty-two pages.
Yeah, but, but if, if, if you all want to.
That actually is kind of a deterrent to using the information. Yeah, the volume of it. I mean, I read it.
Oh, it's not, it's remountable, but, but it's a good point. It's a good point to say like, I read it at least once. You know, it's, presidents take the time to, to answer these questions. What do we do with, with these answer suggestions, questions? Okay.
And if you wanna bring, you know, yeah, everyone bring one proposal that you like and you want me to pursue and actually come up with an actual proposal, and I can do that, you know, if. If snow, if shoveling people's snow or senior citizens' snow is, is a issue that this council wants to do.
Well, I mean, it's all.
Newsletter and say, you know, residents, um, mention this and here's how, here's an example of how it's gonna act. Maybe that's be a newsletter. Update.
Yeah, right. Okay, okay, Jeff.
Yeah, so I knew the hour, so I'm gonna try and do this in, let's say, two minutes or less, but I just wanted to share. A couple things. Oh, thank you, Arthur, but, uh, you are amazing. Let me make sure I've got the, right, well, okay, I'm gonna try and share. There we go. All right, so I'm just gonna do this quickly and let's do this in the spirit of following up with Arthur. Michael, anyone else who is interested, but I did do a, a quick kind of a deeper dive and just a couple things. Again, this is not meant to get into that weeds, but just a few observations. So. I'm gonna just use one quote, which I love, which is if we have the data, let's look at it. If all we have are opinions, let's go with mine. So I just feel, you know, we've got data, but at the same time, you know, how are we gonna kind of use it? And the other thing is, look, data, it's imperfect, but it's better than having nothing. So I think there's a really a lot of good things. So just a couple of points, you know, here I'm showing the sampling, the by street. And again, this is just follow-up. I mean, we can literally see over the years that there's been consistency. And frankly, in some places where maybe we can reach out, you know, through street captains, you know, that are lower than others. And, you know, I see that Turner and, um, Raymond are kind of neck and neck. You know, Raymond has that history of being the front leader, so. There's a little competition there amongst the streets too. The other piece on the sampling, which I just wanna share, which is, is kind of important in terms of the framing. So again, recognizing went out. To five hundred seventy-two emails on constant contact and plus there were eighteen hand-delivered surveys. So if we look at that as the sampling frame, it was roughly about twenty-five percent, which in the scheme of things, fifty percent is awesome. Anywhere from honestly five to twenty-five is, you know, it's within the norm. And then the other piece, which I just shared for us to think about is just, you know, if our voter roll. For last year was six twenty-seven. Then what is that discrepancy, right? So just thinking about how for next time, where do we get the sampling and how do we improve on it? And then just a couple other things, you know, that were already talked about, but when we talk about, you know, kind of the items. Just so that we can have, I think, information that is really helpful. And, and, and clear. So when we have certain items that, that lump in a couple things. It's, you know, what are we measuring and what are, what are we getting out of it? So the idea is, you know, we could parse. Certain things where we could break out. You know, how do you feel about the election? How do you feel about drop-off or in-person? And then, you know, specifically about the events or celebrations. So that way you can unpack it. And really get a sense of, you know, what folks are responding to, and then what is the granularity there? And then, just, you know, moving forward, I think also we talked about this when the budget was being described, but. Again, you know, the thirty-five thousand price tag could be like sticker value or shock value. So the real question, you know, is, you know, are there events or are there other types of activities that you'd like to see? And then we can figure out how and in what framing, you know, we might use the budget, because again. Is it that folks are afraid that thirty-five, which is for all the events, you know, might be a deterrent, so on and so forth?
Yeah, um, this, the survey was circulated for several months beforehand. It would have been useful to have some of these analyses done then, but we could have improved it.
I, well, just as, yeah, we can take that off line. I, I think, I think somewhere, and I think at the end of the day, probably with all the feedback coming in. So it's all good. Like I said, this is just for future, you know, consideration and again.
You could have done it for past consideration, and if you had looked at it.
Well, Arthur, if you wanna really get into it, this particular slide of the unloading is a redline version I submitted, but those comments were not included. So I'm just sharing that there were comments that were included around how to do it, but we went a different way. So. Um, and then, you know, again, this is referencing unloading in terms of just. Well, when we try and basically bundle. Several different concepts within an item. Um, and then I think the other piece just around item consistency, but also the value in the granularity of the data. So for all the services we currently do, we have a spread of highly valued, valued or not valued. But for the new ones, we had yes or no. So again, consistency, I think it probably would have been good to kind of look at those things. And, you know, I'll just skip through because I know there'll be a lot of look at the election and do we do in-person? Do we have, you know, go back? And so I just share this as future discussion, which is really an interesting one, where if you look at the trends. Of fair and easy and open, for the last three years under all mail-in, you have very high. In terms of easy fare. Um, and, you know, then of course you have that, well. If we, you know, how many people wanna go back to in-person or celebration? And that's very high. So I think that there's some really good things for us to tease out. And the other piece, which I just wanna put in in terms of understanding, in terms of policy and decision-making, is also. What is the impact of in-person versus the mail-in? And I think we recognize this, but it's the average increase of the number of ballots cast. And if we look at extrapolations over the last six years, and I did the means of the ballots cast and, and some extrapolation. You look at a potential increase during the all-mail-in of a hundred and twenty-six ballots on average. Or an increase of fifty-six percent. So again, I wanna put this in perspective of. Believe me, the idea of in-person, it's the nostalgia, the idea of filling out or whatever we do is great. But also, let's just couple it with what we know has increased the number of ballots, which is important. And really, that's it. And I promise, within this minute, the qualitative data, which I think is important. I looked at it more deeply, I, I recoded it. And, you know, so just putting in perspective, eighty percent of all people who had submitted a survey. Um, essentially submitted comments, but recognizing there was one person. And let's not guess names, who represent point oh-six percent who answered all twenty-seven open-ended responses. And then if you look even deeper, about ten actually commented about half or fifteen, fifteen of those. So again, when you're looking at the number of folks who, who submitted, you know, comments, it's pretty good. And it's actually quite sizable, but it's actually gravitating down to, as Susan had mentioned, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a select few who are really. Recording a lot of comments throughout. And then the last piece I just put here is. You know, there were some things, you know, election and voting about the question. About, there was a, a comment about ethics, even though we didn't ask about it. There was a question about the volunteerism. There were actually a couple, you know, so. These really came out as, as things that some residents took the time to enter in about. Why and what about volunteerism, ethics? And then finally with events, as, as Michael shared, there was a lot of robustness. A lot of robustness about future events and what things, what folks wanted, including having events that might be catered to certain. Um, uh, uh, you know, age or, you know, and things. So I think there's a lot of goodness there. And then finally.
Jeff, can you send this to?
Yeah, absolutely. The finally, the future considerations, we talked about the sampling, the item design. The analysis, you know, again, I think there's some interesting things that we could do with the trends, but not, you know, uh, and then finally in terms of the miscellaneous. You know, I, I think the idea of, um, you know, when we talk about services, we can have more of that in-depth discussion with, uh, with the community. So, there you go.
Sorry, I, okay, my spouse is stuck on Amtrak north of Baltimore, so. Um, should have been home an hour ago. Okay, um, treasurer's report, everything's going great.
Everything's going great.
Okay. Um, anything beyond that, since we had the audit, uh, okay?
We had the audit. No, I have, there's a mistake, arithmetic mistake in here. Uh, net income for the, it should be forty thousand. I, I, I copied and pasted from. Send you a corrected copy for permanent.
Okay, okay, thanks, Arthur. Manager's report, please.
Um, yes, thank you. Um, there's one additional item that's not on my written report that I became aware of today, and that is that. Um, House Bill two sixty-nine in the state of Maryland. Um, would impact our charter. There's a piece of language in our, um, charter. That says all property owners or residents have the right to vote in our village. Um, apparently that is, um, being amended out of possibility, so we would be in violation.
It's being what?
Um, and, and Ron can jump in. I had Ron look at this, um, today. Um, the village, the village was named in the introduction of this bill in committee. Um, because we are one of the, um, I don't know how many there are, but we are one of the municipalities, but still has this kind of outdated language.
So, okay, so how is it being changed?
Um, I guess Ron can jump in here, but I guess, uh, that wouldn't, we wouldn't be allowed to, to have that in our charter anymore, that property. Property, property owners that are not residents wouldn't, wouldn't be able to vote, shouldn't be able to vote in our village elections. So I guess the question is, is would we want to preemptively amend our charter, um, just to update that language?
Why did you do that for years?
And Ron did mention that this has come up before and that, um, previous councils maybe didn't actually amend this, but we, we could do it now, so. Ron, is there anything to add to that?
No, I will, I will draft a resolution for introduction at the next meeting. Yeah, House. See, House Bill two six nine, sponsored by delegate David Moon of Tacoma Park. Gave testimony about the bill yesterday and he specifically mentioned Martin's additions.
Martin's addition, yes.
Mispronounced it, yes.
So maybe that's a different jurisdiction.
Okay.
Tweeted out by a WA and reporter, um. Yeah, uh, Martin, um. Awesome, Martin, ironically, I was from New York. Fascinating thing I just learned, the Village of Martin's Edition. A small incorporated town in Chevy Chase defines a qualified voter as any person who owns property. Or any resident of Martin's Edition who is eighteen years of age or over and then owns property. Uh, question mark, so.
All right, we'll figure this one out.
Might be a little bit in the news, but we can, we can fix that, and I just learned about this this evening.
How many retweets is the question? I'm not sure if it's, uh, this year.
From September. It was mentioned, this delegate mentioned. Not a, a resident.
Good, okay, yeah, great. Okay, what else?
Okay, so, um, Ron's gonna draft an amendment.
Thank you.
Talk about it next time. Um, we have a updated contract. I just want you all to be aware from Green Suite. That does our landscaping and the little flower beds and those types of things. Um, that's under the ten thousand dollar limit, so we don't need to go to a public proposal, and it's just a renewal of our current contract. Um, so I have that for signature. Um, I am, it's still in the process of becoming a, a notary, uh, the process has changed in the state of Maryland, and now requires a three-hour training class that I'm gonna schedule with all my free time. Um, village communications have come up tonight, um, you'll see, there's been some edits. The one thing I did wanna note on that is, um, the email alerts, whenever I have a, a heads up that something's coming, um, if it's a gas leak or discolored water or several things have come up recently, um, I will send out an email alert as fast as possible notifying people. There are quite a few instances when I do not have a heads up, um, especially when utility companies are working in the village. So we've had two instances this week, one today on Bradley, where on, on Bradley today, Pepco just started digging in the street and didn't, didn't, never told me, um, that that was coming, so, um, doing what we can here. Um, the town managers in the, um, immediate area and they call it Low County, um, are meeting in two weeks, I think from yesterday, um, which will be a good opportunity for me to kind of meet the ones that I haven't met yet, and also just kind of brainstorm about some of the larger issues that we've, um, been working on or would need to work on together. Especially, um, who owns the streetlights, um, is a, is an ongoing topic, um, among email threads among managers. So I know we have, um, some, some people that want to add street, a couple of streetlights. Um, and I know we put a lot of money into adding streetlights, um, or upgrading our streetlights several years ago. And from my understanding of it, we still don't own those streetlights, even though we paid for them, um, Pepco owns them, so there's.
Also supposed to have some extras that seem to have disappeared.
Oh.
Uh, in the original, in the original purchase.
Um, so, yeah, if there's any, anything that you all wanna know or want to direct me to, try to collaborate with neighboring managers, especially on, on water issues on Taylor and streetlights.
Engineering, I mean, lighting engineer.
Yes, yes.
My daughter and her friends wanna know if it's with the alien poles outside, they've been in the tall, well, that's for traffic, um, finding.
Oh, traffic counting, yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering about that as well.
Yeah.
There, there, there are, there are several, um, traffic counters, and I'm not sure exactly who, who those are, whether that's state highway or. Yeah. I can try to get to the bottom of that for you. Um, and the last thing is, I've started doing, um, this is one fun thing to end on, I've started doing lunchtime walks on Fridays, and inviting residents to join me. Um, I would invite you all to join me as well, of course, not all of you at once, because that would be a public meeting. Um, I think I got a laugh out of Ron on there, um, hopefully.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, all right, um, yeah, but, but that's been really helpful for me to kind of get a, a mental health break in the middle of the day, the busy days here. Um, but also an opportunity to meet with residents and walk around and just witness different things that are going on in here, and see the village through other people's perspective, so that's been really nice.
Just, we have a trampoline in the backyard, you don't have to ask us, just go.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Probably break, break my leg.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, that's it?
That's it for my report.
Thank you. Um, looking at the hour of the night, almost ten thirty, any other, uh, comments from residents? Sure enough, uh, Marty and then Susan, and then if I don't see any more hands, we're gonna adjourn.
Thank you for another long meeting, but I think a very helpful one. And, uh, my question was about the survey. Um, how do residents get to see a copy of the comments? I mean, do we need to do it for you? I couldn't quite figure out what the answer was on that. We just asked for it administratively?
Uh, yeah, Ron, maybe you wanna answer that question?
So, you don't have to wait for a, a formal request, you can, you treat, a verbal request tonight as a request and we can process it.
Okay, well, I'm here by requesting, and thank you. Uh, I look forward to reading the comments.
Okay, Susan?
Um, hi, yeah, I would also like to see a copy of the comments. And I was just wondering, I wasn't sure what the clarification was about the time period for the curing of the ballots. How did that resolve? Is there, um, twenty-four hours? Is it, can you see the non-conforming ballots the day of, uh, envelopes the day before, at, right after they're due, and then start the clock on trying to contact people? Or is it twenty-four hours after five PM on the twenty-fourth? So I'm just kind of wondering what was determined about that. Thanks.
It, well, I don't think Susan, it was determined, I think it's, what, what, uh, however, the election committee interprets the election plan is how they will proceed, and I, I hope, and I, I'm, I'm sure the council agrees, that they will use, um, the, the flexibility that's provided to them in the election plan to make sure that, that there's no, no voter in this village, no resident disenfranchised. Okay, all right. Uh, and with that, at ten twenty-six PM, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Katie makes the motion, we have a second?
Yo.
I'll pay for say aye. We're adjourned seven twenty-six, good night, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Let's wait.